Good afternoon and welcome to the January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one session of the Board of Zoning Appeals. In a moment, we will commence the call, the calendar, the copy of which can be found posted on the town's website. This is a virtual hearing pursuant to two oh two point one seven of executive order that that you can participate in, join in utilizing the address www.brookhaven.ny.gov backslash join or by or by utilizing the virtual hearing link found on the Board of Zoning Appeals page on the town's website. Applications before this board will consist of three parts, the presentation of the applicant, the testimony of those wishing to speak on the application, and then finally, the rebuttal testimony of the applicant limited to those issues brought on by persons speaking in opposition. At the conclusion of each of the applications, this board will take one of three actions. We can decide the application today by a motion to grant or deny the relief requested. Alternatively, we can close the public hearing and place the matter on decision calendar. Finally, we can hold the public hearing open to a future date. That you hear at the end of your case is a motion to grant the application. What this means is at least in part that the relief that you seek from this board has been has been granted. A grant letter will be issued from the Board of Zoning Appeals within seven to ten business days. Grant letter will be sent directly to the applicant. This is the document that you return to the building department with to continue with if when you wish to continue with your endeavor. If the motion that you hear at the end of your case is a motion to close to the public hearing and place the matter on our decision calendar. What this means is that your public hearing was held today and the record is now closed for decision. The board has under the code sixty-two days in which to render a decision. Once that decision is rendered, the applicant will be notified directly. Those interested in viewing a copy of the decision or learning obtaining a copy of it can do so by accessing it off the town's website under the calendar and agenda links for the Board of Zoning Appeals. Once that decision has been filed with the town clerk. Finally, the motion that you hear is to hold the public hearing open to a future date. This occurs when either an applicant has not met the conditions precedent to the relief requested or maybe more commonly where the board requires additional information before we can decide the application. In this instance, the public hearing record is held open to a future date. On that future date, the required information is made part of the record and the matter is closed for decision. I want to remind all you that when joining or participating in this meeting, you must name yourself with your name and the application number that you have interest in speaking on. As you can tell, we have a number of cases on our calendar today. You must indicate the case number for us to determine which application to bring you up to participate in the hearing. So please do so. And I thank you for your attention. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice. Justice for all.
Good afternoon again. Welcome to the January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one session of Board of Zoning Appeals. Maybe we have roll call.
Board members, James Mazzarella.
President.
Charles Lazaru.
President.
Rick Cunha. Ronald Lindsay.
President.
Howard Berksen.
President.
Deputy Chair James Wisdom.
President.
We're going to commence this meeting with case number one.
We have no postponements off of this calendar. Case number one is Phil Valente, care of Woodhall Expediting, ten thirty-one Main Street, Port Jefferson. Property is located on the east side of Senec Hills Drive, five hundred and forty-two feet north of Fox Hollow Lane in Ridge. Applicant request minimum and total side yard variances for proposed carport.
Mr. Berksen, I have Amy DeVito for the applicant.
Okay.
I'm promoting her.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Amy. Uh, Miss. Mr. DeVito, Amy, you want to you want to make your presentation?
Yeah, you can hear me, right?
Mr. Berksen, can you just, Amy, can you give your attention to the Board's attorney to be sworn?
Sure.
I mean, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, not much truth.
I do.
Okay.
Amy, can you just have your name and address for the record?
Sure, Amy DeVito, Woodhall Expediting with offices at ten thirty-one Main Street, Port Jefferson, New York, one one seven seven seven. Good evening, Mr. Vice Chairman and members of the board. Amy DeVito, on behalf of the applicant. The owner is proposing to add a carport and rear addition to the home as depicted on the survey on the screen. The carport will be beside what is the existing garage right now, and the addition will go adjacent to that carport to the back of the property. Or to the, I guess that would be east of the front of the property. And the purpose of the addition is to create a master bedroom suite with the carport in front. The existing garage is going to be converted into a dining area. I did submit plans, Anthony, I'm not sure if you got them in time to upload them to the file. I do have them here to hold up if need be and.
DeVito, I have them.
Okay, great. If you wouldn't mind, Anthony, just so everybody could follow along and see what we're doing, pulling them up, that would be great.
In one moment.
Sure. Okay, great, thank you so much. So as you can see in the front of the property, the existing garage is being proposed as a dining room, which is creating the need for the carport. They decided to just do the carport because the actual enclosed garage is unnecessary for their car storage. They just wanted a roof over area to just cover their cars from the elements. And then the rear of that addition, you could see that there is a master bedroom suite, and they're basically just doing a renovation to the house. And we did submit some comparables to the board for review as well as photos of the subject. And I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Amy, it's Howard Berksen. You are proposing a side yard of twelve point three foot. How does that compare to other side yards in the neighborhood in the area?
So we did find some similar grants. They weren't exactly twelve feet, but very close to it. And in the neighborhood, this whole neighborhood is owned A1, it was a large subdivision. Almost all the property, actually, I will say, all of the properties are actually nonconforming to A1 standards. They're all less than an acre and most of them are around a half an acre or less. So this type of encroachment is not unusual for this neighborhood.
Okay, also, I see that this particular piece, the parcel, is pie-shaped and it's getting narrow. It gets narrow as you approach the street, which creates the the difference between the side yard of seventeen point eight at the rear of the carport and twelve point three at the front of the carport, is that right?
That's correct. So actually, if you, it's not notated on the survey, but if you take a scale ruler to the edge of the rear of the addition and take it to the side yard line, it actually maintains the same setback as the house as it exists in the front. So the the rear addition is not encro- the rear part of the addition is not encroaching any further into the established setback. But because of the the lots curvature inward towards the street, it is creating the closer setback for the front of the addition.
And so the the application is just for the carport because of the, just for the carport, is that right?
That's correct.
And it's only the the shape of the property that's creating the the smaller of the two side yards at twelve point three, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, uh, does the board have any other questions, any members of the board? Okay, Anthony, are there any, anybody wants to speak on this matter?
Mr. Berksen, I don't have any speakers.
I don't have any correspondence.
Okay, uh, I'm going to make a motion to approve the application submitted, type two.
Second.
Second by.
Motion made by Mr. Berksen, seconded by Jim Mazarella.
All favor.
Hi.
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 Motion passed.
Thank you.
Case number two, Sam and Julianne Cianciola, care of Woodhall Expediting. Properties located on the north side of Strauss Avenue, four hundred and eleven feet east of Boyle Road, Selden. Applicant request minimum and total side yard variances for existing two-story residence addition. Side and rear yard variances for existing deck and existing shed. Side yard variance for existing second-story deck.
Mr. Mazarella, I have Amy DeVito for the applicant.
Thank you. How are you?
Good, Amy DeVito, Woodhall Expediting with offices at ten thirty-one Main Street, Port Jefferson, New York. Mr. Mazarella and members of the board. So this is actually a high ranch. However, it's, um, there's a few models in this neighborhood. It's the the area right off of Boyle Road, um, another larger subdivision. But this this particular model, although it's a high ranch, you actually, when you walk in the front door, you're actually on the second level, which is different from most high ranches because usually you're kind of in between and could go up or down. In this case, the way that these models were set up, you walk into the front door, you're on the second level. You could navigate towards the back of the house, uh, which is actually the dining room, and you're able to go down a staircase into the lower level. That's how these are configured. So my client years ago, um, they added the the addition on the west side of the home to create a staircase because they wanted to be able to add a sliding glass door at the back of their home and the rear deck that you see highlighted in pink and blue and walk out onto the deck from the upper level, which created a situation where the staircase had to be relocated. Otherwise, they wouldn't have been able to have the deck. So that was the purpose of the addition. The the addition is actually a staircase, it it just houses the the stairwell, really. And this was built many, many years ago. It was actually built in, sorry. It was actually built prior to two thousand and one, so it's been there for a very long time. We are, we don't know of any issues with the neighbors throughout the years, and I am happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you, Amy.
No problem.
Anything else on the board? Give me a second here, I just want to look at some of the photos that Anthony's bringing up now. Okay, can you just hold it there for a second, Anthony? So that's the. I see, okay. I see what you're saying, Amy, about the fact that it's described as second story, even a second, even a deck being second story. But I could see what you're saying about how it just walks walks out from that main level. The main story is almost like really the downstairs in a way. And then I see how it splits off onto the two decks. And so you're saying all of this was constructed back in two thousand and one? That includes the decking and the addition?
Yes, the the sliding glass door, the decking and the addition were all constructed at the same time. The addition was necessary as part of the construction for the deck and the sliding glass door because that's where the staircase used to be. Right where that sliding glass door was is actually where the staircase used to go downstairs internally into the lower level of the house.
Okay, so essentially, if I may, then the 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 house originally was a, I guess, somewhat of a rectangle without, so so where that twelve point five is, it just continued and squared off, am I correct?
Twelve point five.
In other words, the twelve point five from that west side, which is the front of the house, where you have the twelve.
Yes, 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 I'm sorry, I was looking at the house dimensions, yes.
So that.
You need to just go straight back.
But that in essence used to go straight back, making the house a rectangle at the time, okay. All right, and in regard to the shed, do we have a que- do we have a picture of the shed, Anthony? So.
Storage shed, Mr. Mazarella, they just use it for any, you know, lawn items, lawn chairs, things of that nature, that's what's stored in the shed. And it was just tucked in the far back corner because the yard is small and obviously the deck takes up some square footage and they were just trying to give themselves, you know, an area of grass.
Right, so no, uh, no utilities in the shed at all, right?
No, no utilities in the shed, nope.
Okay, and the only other thing is it appears that that stockade fence has gone on to the next lot. In other words, looks like it's property line, is that correct? I guess that's.
Yeah, it it does overlap the property line. I'm I'm not sure, you know, who installed the fence or when that occurred. But it's it's also conceivable that my client possibly thought that the property line started at that fencing, which is why they, you know, set the shed back how they did, thinking that it was actually the property line.
Usually what happens. Okay, so, um, and there is a neighbor on that side? There is a house there?
Yes.
Okay. No issues with the neighbor, do we know of?
Not that I know of, we haven't received any phone calls. My client had received a couple of phone calls from neighbors, just friendly, you know, asking, you know, what what, why they received the letter, but no complaints that we know of.
Okay, gotcha. All right, I have no further questions unless the board has any further, or if Anthony, you have any speakers.
Mr. Mazarella, I do not have any speakers at this moment.
No correspondence, Lori.
No correspondence, Jim.
All right, there's no further questions on the board, I'd like to make a motion. Motion to accept as presented, type two.
Motion made by Jim Mazarella, seconded by Jimmy Wisdom, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Case number three, Tammy and Robert Ward, thirty-eight Iroquois Trail Ridge, located on the west side of Iroquois Trail, eighty feet south of Northview Trail Ridge. Applicant request rear yard variance for proposed sunroom.
Mr. Wisdom, I have Kate McHenry with Long Island permit for the applicant.
So. Looking at the area, I do see proposed, well, I see extensions on the backs of some of these houses here. And this is only a, uh, it's a masonry patio right now, but they want to put a proposed sunroom in.
Turn your microphone on, this.
Can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hey, guys. Actually, they have a memorial for their son in the backyard, they just lost him last year and it's.
Mr. Wisdom.
You need to swear the.
I need to swear, Jimmy, we need to swear, Chairman, we need to swear them in.
Big Henry, just put your hand up, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
Okay, so I do see the.
I'm sorry, Ms. McHenry, can we just get your name and address?
Yes, on behalf of the applicant, Kathleen McHenry, Long Island permits, P O Box five, Center Rogers, New York, one one nine three four.
Thank you.
Good.
You're going to sort of.
All right, so this is a memorial for their son, is what you're saying?
They have a memorial in the backyard and it's their wish. I did include, I sent some pictures to Mr. Vega's email earlier today of the house, of some surrounding properties, and I did include the memorial in there. And right now they have the patio, it's just their wish to enclose it, not heated, not habitable, just so that Mrs. Ward can sit outside in the winter and enjoy the memorial for her son.
Is, are there any other, um, let's just say, sunrooms in the area? I don't see an aerial, so.
It's hard, it was hard, it's hard to see, a lot of them have high fences. There's some additions in the back, I don't know if there's, if they're heated. They're considered four-season sunrooms. But in looking at the aerial, it does look to me that a lot of the lots appear to be the same size as ours with with rear yard setbacks that don't seem to hold sixty feet. So we think that if granted, we would be keeping in the nature and characteristics of the surrounding properties.
Okay. Want to make a motion?
Mr. Wisdom, we do not have any speakers on this case.
And I don't have any correspondence.
All right, so, well, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to grant the application, type two.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Wisdom to grant and a second by Mr. Cunha, all in favor? Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you, you guys have a good afternoon.
Case number four.
Mr. Cardy, just this one moment, we're just going to mute it, they're doing a test of the fire alarm.
Okay.
Mark his law.
How long, do you know? Can you do one more? So who are participating, we apologize, we had a fire alarm earlier and we are just conducting a fire alarm check right now. Just bear with us for a moment, thank you. Mr. Cardy, I think we're good now.
All right, case number four, James Abello, care of Andrew Malguanera, seven thirteen Main Street, Port Jefferson. Properties located on the southeast corner of John Street and Miller Avenue, Port Jefferson Station. Applicant request front yard setback variance for Miller Avenue and rear yard variance for existing one-story residence addition with wraparound roof over.
Mr. Cunha, I have Amy DeVito for the applicant. I'm Mr. DeVito, can, Mr. DeVito, can we just get, give your attention to the attorney to be sworn?
Been sworn in.
All right, then let's just start with your name and affiliation with the application.
My name is Amy DeVito, with offices at ten thirty-one Main Street, Port Jefferson, New York, one one seven seven seven. And I am here on behalf of Andrew Malguanera for the applicant. Mr. Cuna, how are you? So we are legalizing a addition, which is technically in the front yard. This addition, so the applicant or the owner, rather, purchased the property in two thousand and nine. The addition existed prior to their ownership and from what I could see, it appears in the nineteen seventy aerial. So it appears to be there for quite some time and it's consistently there throughout in the more clearer aerials. The the addition is actually their living room and I am happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Okay, um, let's start with the 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 overhang that they're referring to or the roof over. Where's, that's basically the eve, is that correct?
Yes, it's, um, I'm not really sure why we're we're calling it a roof over, but yes, it is the eve that you see that's beside each part of the bay window.
And and you stated that it was in existence on the seventy-four or seventy-eight, I didn't hear that one.
I I see it on the seventy-eight aerial and then every aerial thereafter.
Okay, so at least it's existed since nineteen seventy-eight, it's their living room. Now, what about the wood deck that's on the survey? I got a sur- I have a survey with an X through it, is that wood deck being removed or is it gone?
The wood deck is, I'm not sure if it's gone yet, but it is proposed to be removed, it will be removed as part of this application.
All right, and any issues with any of the neighbors?
We haven't been notified of any issues. Mr. Malguanera's office has not, and I don't believe that the homeowner has received any correspondence either.
Okay, Mr. Vega, any correspondence whatsoever?
Mr. Cunha, I do not have any.
And any speakers?
I don't have any correspondence.
Okay. Then I I move to grant the application as presented, type two. And I believe I heard Mr. Lindsay say that, Mr. Vega.
We have a motion to grant by Mr. Cunha and a second by Mr. Lindsay.
Favor.
Hi.
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 Motion passed.
Thank you.
Case number five, Vitina Warner, care of Andrew Malguanera. Properties located on the east side of Middle Island Boulevard, seventy-five feet south of Cedar Grove Terrace, Middle Island. Applicant request side yard variance for existing cellar entrance exceeding the five-foot permitted encroachment, nine feet is requested.
Mr. Lindsay, I have Ms. DeVito for the applicant. Mr. DeVito, can we just get your name, your appearance for the record?
Sure, Amy DeVito, with offices at ten thirty-one Main Street, Port Jefferson, New York, one one seven seven seven. And I'm here on behalf of Andrew Malguanera for the applicant.
Thank you.
Ms. Lindsay.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you? So, um, the the owners purchased the property actually just last year in two thousand and twenty. The cellar entrance with the roof over existed prior to their ownership. It's very hard to see in the aerials when it was built. I kind of see it in the two thousand and sixteen and aerials prior to that, but I I can't be sure on how long it existed. But just based on the photos, it it, the cellar entrance itself does look a bit weathered, so it looks like it's it's been there for, you know, quite a few years. Again, my, you know, our client purchased it with this condition existing. The cellar entrance presumably presumably was built outright from the house because it is the more shallow part of the house, there's also an air conditioning unit to the side of it, which I am assuming they wanted to avoid having to relocate. And it is a very unique shaped lot, if you take a look at the survey where it does curve in quite a bit. And again, presumably, they they built it this way specifically to make it less invasive to the side of the actual house. It does not appear to be out of character for the neighborhood as far as encroachments. There's a lot of different shapes and sizes of lots in this neighborhood. And we have not been informed of any complaints from the neighbor or any or any, you know, phone calls or correspondence from really anybody in the neighborhood. And I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Okay, um, it looks like it's very well-built, looks like a nice roof over it.
Yes.
I am familiar with the area, there's a lot of old properties there.
Yes.
Island Boulevard, there's a lot of houses with the the same things, with the cellar stairs and stuff going down in. You say they bought the house with the cellar stairs there already?
That's correct.
Okay, and there's been no complaints from any neighbors as you.
Not that we know of, yes.
Okay, do we have any speakers on this or anything?
Mr. Lindsay, I believe we might have a speaker. Let me just promote to see if this person here is for that case. Mr. Lieberman, do you hear us?
Hi.
Are you here for this case?
Yep.
Okay. Can you please give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn?
Go ahead.
Please raise your.
Lieberman, you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Can we just get your name and address for the record?
One forty-five Middle Island Boulevard, Middle Island, New York, one one nine five three.
What would you like?
Um, the these neighbors are very horrible. Like, and like, they they built two sheds right on my property line and they're running a business out of that basement. We've sent numerous complaints to James Canali in his office with video and pictures. I have a two-story and kind of overlooks the property, so like, we can't help but see things. And I've been living here myself thirty-one years.
We thank you for your, is that all, Mr. Lieberman?
Yeah, I put everything in the written complaint, so like, it was pretty detailed, I don't think.
I have a written email from Mr. Lieberman with his concerns, that is part of the record now.
And James Canali's office has the rest of the complaints from my wife, she had correspondence through emails.
Mr. Lieberman, your email is going to be made part of the record with all the details so the board can see.
Thank you.
Um, is there anything, anything additional that you'd like to add?
No, that's just everything, you know, I could just, like, things just got started on the wrong foot and just never should have gone to this point. That's basically my view on things, like, we have to live next door to these people.
Okay, we thank you very much for coming out and your comments to the board. Are there any questions?
Nah.
I have some questions. Who else? Jimmy, did, did you have a question first?
No.
Okay, so sir.
I want to follow you, um, Howard.
Okay, so which side of the house of this applicant's house do you live on? You live by the sheds where those sheds are?
Yes.
Okay, so you, your house is on the opposite side from where this variance issue is, uh, is located, is that correct?
Correct. That part of the house just draws attention because there's six to seven cars in that driveway at a time and there's.
Well, okay, all right, but just in terms, that may be, but just in terms of the application itself. You are, you live on the opposite side from the house, from, from the stairway or from the entrance to the basement that is being, uh, requested here, is that right?
Correct.
And just so it's clear, you said that they built those sheds right on the property line and actually they're, they're over four feet off the property line, is that right?
They're actually exactly three feet, 'cause I measured it.
Well, according to the survey from the property line, not necessarily from the fence, they're 4.1 feet.
I got you. Um, and even if that's the case, when the contractors were building it, I had spoken to the contractors and gave them my card and, and asked for the homeowner to contact me and reference them and I was ignored.
Well, okay. And so you're saying that there's a whole bunch of cars on the property?
Yeah, they, they're running a business out of there. They're, they're, they're running a dog training and boarding business out of the house. They have a Facebook page, everything's online, it's, it's public, it's not easy to find that stuff.
All right, okay. Uh, and you say there's a lot of cars?
Yeah, and there's people living in the basement.
There's people living in that basement?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr., uh, Mr. Chairman? We can certainly have an inspection.
As long as.
Or would like to do that.
Wait, wait, wait. Yeah, jump in as long as you're saying something.
Lorrie, your mic is.
Um, I, I just wanted, Howard, Howard, I just wanted to let you know that the, um, I have the like printout from the town portal. There are no complaints listed in the portal for any of this. The last thing was in 2003 for an illegal basement apartment, which was closed out.
Well, okay, but you know, with respect to the alleg, the complaints that the gentleman just made, way beyond the nature of the application. Maybe it would be appropriate to have the inspection.
Okay.
Mr. DeVito, do you have the authority to grant an inspection by the board?
I, I would say yes, because, um, I, I think this is gonna become necessary for us to proceed. So we could go ahead and, uh, you know, say that we will allow for the inspection. I would just want to obviously pass this back on to Andrew Malguanera to then handling the scheduling of said inspection. I just wanna, um, make one correction. I believe based on, um, just, uh, reading some notes in the file that the roof over the cellar entrance was actually added by the current homeowner. I might have misspoke earlier, so I just wanted to correct the record. But the cellar entrance itself, which is what we're requesting the variance for, existed prior to their ownership. And I just wanna reiterate what Mr. Bergson was saying. Uh, the sheds are 10 by 14. They are, uh, less than the, uh, square footage threshold to require a permit and they are also maintaining the, um, proper zoning setback. So, uh, Mr. Lieberman had made a complaint about the shed, but the sheds actually would not require a permit and they are maintaining the proper setback.
What about a poured foundation? Both sheds are on a poured cement foundation.
What's your question?
That, um, where it looks, um, not to, we, we don't usually allow the kind of cross questioning like that. The witness is here to testify, not ask questions. If you're asking us the question, there's nothing wrong with having a poured foundation for the shed.
I'm sorry.
And needs, and needs, because like I had two sheds in my backyard and I had two poured foundations and I was told that they had to, my shed had to be put on top of those because they were existing and they had, they were on the, uh, plans. And those, those were brand new.
Well, the, the, the matter's not here for the sheds. If there's a violation with respect to the sheds, when, if, when and if we do this inspection, we'll deal with that at the time.
Mr. Cardy, do we have, um, available dates?
Um, the date would be February 10th.
Mr. Lieberman, are there any further questions?
No, thank you. I appreciate your time.
Are there any more questions from the board?
No, Howard asked everything I was gonna ask.
Mr. Lindsay, do you have a motion?
Yeah, a motion to, uh, I guess it would be the, not the closing hold, the holdover until February 11th, until the inspection is taking place.
February 10th.
February 10th.
Second.
Motion is to adjourn to February 10th, seconded by Mr. Lazaru. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lieberman. Thank you, Mr. DeVito.
Thank you.
Case number six, Joseph and Lucy Dubrowski, seven Shady View Crossing Manorville. Properties located on the north side of Shady View Crossing, 265 feet west of Park Ridge Drive, Manorville. Applicant requests side yard variance for proposed in-ground swimming pool.
Mr. Lazaru, I have Diane Moshe for the applicant.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chair, I recuse.
Let the record. Ms. Moshe, can we just give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn?
Sure.
Good afternoon. You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Can we just get your appearance for the record?
Diane Moshe, DNI Expediting Services, offices at 779 Horse Black Road in Farmingville.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the subject premises is located on Shady View, um, Lane, uh, in Manorville. We're before the board, uh, seeking permission for a proposed in-ground swimming pool that meets the criteria for the setbacks with the exception of one side yard setback. As you can see by the aerial, there are several other pools in the surrounding area that are close to the rear property line and the side property line and, um, there have been other variances, as I understand it, granted, uh, in the surrounding area. The granting of this variance would create no detriment to the surrounding area. The board has any questions, I'd be happy to address them at this time.
Ms. Moshe, this is Charles Lazaru.
Hi, Charles, how are you?
Fine, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Good, um. If, I'm looking at the aerial and I'm trying to locate any, any pools.
Number three.
Number three?
And.
Oh, yes, I see it.
And then numbers four, six, eight, 10, 12, across the street, virtually every house across the street.
Yes, I see it now. Okay, let me ask a question. One of the questions is, could that pool be relocated? If you look at this, the site survey, if it could be relocated a little further to the west to come in more to conformance that?
Well, as I understand it, there have been eight-foot side yard variance or rear yard variances granted in the area. They are trying to preserve as much yard space as possible, as you're well aware with COVID and everybody being homebound. People are trying to make their homes as, um, entertaining as they can for small children. So I would ask that you consider the eight feet. If we needed to, uh, push it over a little bit, we, we could in fact do that.
Well, that was my question. It doesn't have to be total conformance, but more in conformance.
Correct, I understand, but if you've granted other variances at eight feet, then.
Let's, let's deal with this one. Could it be moved to 10 feet?
It can be.
Would you, would you get the applicants, uh, to agree to that?
I, I have already asked. I've inspired.
Ms. Moshe, I have the applicant, um, here. If you'd like me to bring them up.
If they'd like to, that's fine. Did they want to be brought forward?
Ms. Moshe, they, uh, on the chat, they said if there's any questions, I'm promoting them as we speak.
Okay, great. So I would, I would say that in the meantime, while we're waiting, I'd, I'd ask you to refer to.
Ms. Moshe, one moment, sorry.
Sure.
Dubrowski, how you doing? You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you.
Can we just get your name and address for the record, Mr. Dubrowski?
Joseph Dubrowski, seven Shady View Crossing, Manorville, New York, 11949.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt, Ms. Moshe.
I was bringing your attention to three Shady View Crossing. You can see that the pool is located almost in the same location that we're proposing and that you can see that it's close to the side property line as well. As well as, uh, all the pools across the street are very close, uh, to the rear property line. And you have number four, Shady View, that appears to be closer to the side property line and number eight, Shady View.
Okay, well, um, I'm asking you, Mr. Dubrowski, the same question I asked your representative. Is there a possibility that you would agree to moving that, uh, pool slightly to the west to be in more in conformance, but not total conformance?
Uh, yeah, I'd be, if 10 feet would work, that'd be fine as well.
Fine, I have no further questions.
Can we get a motion?
My motion will be to, uh, approve, uh, to grant this application with the stipulation that the pool side yard, which is the eastern side yard, would be 10 feet.
Second.
So is that, is that a motion to approve or to amend or to both?
One or motion to amend the application.
To amend. Amend the application to read 10-foot setback on the eastern side of the lot line.
Second.
The motion is for Mr. Lazaru for a 10-foot side yard on the eastern side of the property. And a second from Mr. Bergson. All in favor?
All in. Hi.
Hi.
So, is that, is that the motion to approve? Is that the motion to amend?
That was a motion to amend. Is there a motion to approve the application with a 10-foot side yard?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second, well, I agree, yeah.
Motion to approve, uh, application with a 10-foot side yard, uh, with a second by Mr. Bergson. All in favor?
Hi. And it's a type-two action, Mr.?
It's a type-two action. Motion to type-two action.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion granted.
Case number seven, Helen Marie Matson, care of Sharon O'Brien, 54, Middle Place, Middle Island Road, Mount Sinai. Properties located on the south side of Smith Road, 127 feet east of Metzner Road, Lake Ronkonkoma. Applicant requests side yard variance for existing shed located in the required side yard.
Mr. Bergson, I have Sharon O'Brien for the applicant.
Do you?
Should I get sworn in, sir?
Yes, Sharon, you want to, uh, speak to John?
Sharon, can you turn your video on?
Now, can you hear me?
Yes. You solemnly, you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Mr. Brian, can we just get your appearance for the record?
You certainly can. My name is Sharon O'Brien, 54, Miller Place, Middle Island Road, Mount Sinai, New York. And I am here, uh, I am appearing on behalf of the homeowner. The subject property is located on Smith Street and Lake Ronkonkoma. We are before you this afternoon to legalize a 10-by-14 shed that is located in the required side yard. This shed has been on the property since 2010 with no complaints. I have provided the board with pictures of the shed showing by maintaining the shed where it stands. 7.2 feet off the south property line. It does not adversely impact the neighbor contiguous to the south or any other neighbor in the immediate area. To relocate the shed, we'd have to take down some mature trees and evergreens. And we would ask the board to look favorably on our application. If the board has any questions, I will answer them now.
Hi, Sharon, it's Howard Bergson.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so how long's that shed been there?
Since 2010, sir.
And has there been any complaints or input from any of the neighbors regarding the shed?
No, sir.
Okay, and I see it's, uh, 140 square feet. And you're maintaining, uh, 7.2 feet, uh, setback from that side yard?
We are.
And I see also that the, uh, although it's in the side yard, it is set back pretty far towards the rear of the house. Although not completely into the rear, not, not into the rear yard, but pretty far, pretty far back. And is, there's a fence that goes across from the front of the house to the, uh, to the, I guess that's the east property line?
Yes, sir.
South property line?
The shed is positioned quite a distance from the front yard, so.
Right, that, that's what I was saying.
Yes, sir. It's not even.
I have nothing further. Are there any, uh, speakers and any of, I'm sorry, any questions from the board?
Yes, Mr., yes, uh, Mr. Bergson.
Go ahead. I guess.
Did he use the shed for?
Storage.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Mr. Bergson, I do not have any speakers.
I don't have any correspondence.
Anthony, I have a question.
Mr. Wisdom?
Was there a hot stick test done on this from PSEJ to the wires?
No, sir. I didn't know it would be necessary for a shed.
We're not talking about the shed, we're talking about the pool.
We're not.
Is the pool on there?
No, sir.
Mr., Mr. Wisdom, we're on case seven.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Um, you know.
It's okay.
All right.
Do you have a motion?
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the application submitted, type two. Second.
Motion is to grant the application seconded by Mr. Mazzarella. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. O'Brien.
Thank you very much.
Case number eight, Charlie and Nicole Ogello, 19 Hyde Lane Quorum. Located on the north side of Hyde Lane, 780 feet east of Winfield Davis Drive Quorum. Applicant requests side yard variance for existing shed. Permission for proposing ground swimming pool to be located less than the required 25 feet from overhead electric wires. 10 feet is requested.
Mr. Mazzarella, I have Diane Moshe for the applicant.
Mr. Vice Chair, I recuse.
Make note that, uh, reference refused.
Hey, Diane.
Ms. Moshe, you're muted. Ms. Moshe, I just wanted to note that your client, um, Ms. Ogello is actually one of the attendees, if you wanted her to be promoted.
Okay, I spoke with her earlier.
Do you want her to be promoted or is she just here to view?
Whatever she'd like to do. It's, it's fine either way.
Yeah, she hasn't said anything, so we'll just go on with the application.
Okay.
Can we just get your, uh, your record, uh, appearance for the record?
Sure, Diane Moshe, DNI Expediting with offices, or, uh, located at 779 Horse Black Road in Farmingville. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we're before the board today seeking permission for a proposed in-ground swimming pool that will meet all the zoning requirements as far as setbacks are concerned, but are before the board because we're seeking 10 feet from overhead wires in the rear property line. And Mr. Wisdom, I do have a hot stick letter from PSEJ and I did send it to, uh, Ms. Riccardi, but I can. We have it for the file, we have it. There you go, I just want to show you. There it is. They have no issue with it. And, uh, also, I, as I understand it, the New York State Code is 10 feet. So I would suggest that, uh, the granting of this variance would not create any detriment to the surrounding area, nor would it impair the values thereof. If the board has any questions, I'd be happy to address them at this time.
Thank you, Diane. So, uh, thanks for the, uh, hot.
Thanks for the hot letter. We don't have to ask that question now.
Right.
So in regard only to the shed, I guess. Do we know how long it's in the yard there?
I don't have an exact timeframe, but I can tell you based on the aerials. It's been there at least since twenty thirteen. Since about twenty thirteen.
And. Are there surrounding properties have sheds close to the property line?
The seventeen Hyde Lane has a shed in the back rear corner. It looks like it's against the property line. Fifteen Hyde Lane has in the back rear corner, it looks like probably about two or three feet off the property line. Further down, you have seven Hyde Lane that has a shed in the same location tucked into the back corner. So yes, that I would say that there's a good amount of accessory structures that are very close to property lines. So the granting of variance would not create any detriment to the surrounding area.
Thank you for that. Any, any questions or comments, complaints from, from the neighbors?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Mazzarella, I do not have any speakers.
Only, only comment I would make, and it looks like it's ever so slightly Diane, is appears that their fence runs a little bit off their property line.
Correct.
Just making a note of it, that's all.
Okay, thanks.
And with regard to that, I have no further questions. If there are any questions from any board members. With no questions, I'll make a motion to approve the application as submitted type two.
Motion is made by Mr. Mazzarella to grant the application type two, seconded by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moji.
Case number nine, Alicia and Joseph Ferro, care of Andrew Malguanera. Properties located on the south side of Andrea Drive, two hundred and fifty feet east of Bennett's Road, East of Tocket. Applicant requests side yard variance for existing shed located in the required side yard.
Mr. Wisdom, I have Amy DeVito for the applicant.
Hi, Mr. Wisdom.
Hi, Mr. DeVito.
Mr. DeVito, can we just get your appearance for the record?
For Amy DeVito with offices at ten thirty-one Main Street, Port Jefferson, New York, one one seven seven seven. Here on behalf of Andrew Malguanera for the applicant.
Mr. DeVito, I just want to let you know that the applicant, Mr. Ferro. Is actually here with us if you'd like me to promote.
I don't think that's necessary. It, I guess we'll see if he, if he wants to be promoted after I've made my presentation.
Okay.
Mr. Wisdom, we are in the process of legalizing the detached shed in the side yard. The, the shed was built in its current location for convenience purposes. The homeowners wanted it somewhat close to where the driveway was for being able to load and unload things. From their, their cars into and out of the shed, just things like tools and, you know, beach items, things like that. The shed is used for storage. There are photos that were submitted to show the interior of the shed. There also appears to be some topography on this property, so the shed is actually built into the hill slightly. I'm not sure how the topography is towards the back of the property. But assuming that this was a nice level area to install it, it looks like that's what the homeowners did. In looking at aerials of the property, it doesn't, or the neighborhood rather, it doesn't seem uncommon for accessory structures to be close to the property lines. I do see a couple of accessory structures inside yards when I look at the aerials. And I don't feel that this would create any type of uncharacteristic situation for the neighborhood. And I am happy to answer any questions the board may have.
So I've been looking at the aerials myself. I do see some sheds in the surrounding properties. So this is not out of character with the neighborhood.
Correct.
I have nothing further.
I just want to let you know that we, this is an historic district. We sent out for their comments on December fourth. I haven't gotten anything back yet. So I don't know if you want to hold this for their comments or. What's up to you?
I guess we might as well.
Okay, so the, the available date would be February tenth for that.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Close and hold.
Um, no, well, you'd have to hold it open for the comments. You'd have to hold it open to February tenth.
Like to make a motion to hold it open till February tenth?
Second.
Motion to hold over till February tenth made by Mr. Lindsay, seconded by Mr. Cunha. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. DeVito.
Case number ten, Thomas Setta, forty-eight Tamarack Road, Rocky Point. Location northeast corner Cherry Road and Tamarack Road, Rocky Point. Applicant requests height variance for existing six-foot-high fence to be relocated to the property line located in the front yard, Cherry Road. Also, front yard setback from Cherry Road and rear yard variances for existing pergola located in the required front yard and for existing bi-level deck.
Mr. Cunha, I have Samantha Shembry for the applicant. Ms. Shembry, can we just give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn?
Thomas swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can we just have your appearance for the record, Ms. Shembry?
Sure. My name is Samantha Shembry. I am representing the applicant, Thomas Seda.
Thank you. Mr. Cunha?
I apologize. Okay, would you like to make your presentation or would you like to want us to start asking questions?
Well. Mr. Seda and his wife only lived there a few years. The work was done by the prior owners. They acquired this property as is without knowledge of needing to do all this work, obviously. A violation was put on their home, which brought it to their attention. There was a few other issues on the property. The fence was originally on the, on the street side of the corner lot of Cherry. They moved it back to the property line. It's still six feet, but they did move it back. There was also a shed encroaching, which they've completely gotten rid of. And then what's left is the deck and the pergola, which we are asking for. Five foot for the pergola and three foot for the deck. The deck, it's super weathered. It was probably built in the early two thousands as well as the pergola, all still in great standing. They take very good care of their home and I probably put it in the early two thousands. The, the area is pretty dense and people seem to all have similar yards, very irregular, things close to lot lines. I, I don't think there's any complaints from the neighbors and I think that's it.
Okay, so Anthony, could you bring back the, the aerial if you don't mind? Okay, so we see that it is a very irregular shaped lot and there's practically no backyard for this home, correct?
Exactly.
The, you said that they bought the house with all these issues, is that correct?
Yes.
Now, the stockade fence that moved to back to the property line, is that where the, the framed shed is that has an X through it on this survey?
The, the framed shed, yes, is completely gone. And they moved, they moved the fence back to their property.
And that stockade fence is the, the one that we're referring to that moved back?
Yeah.
Okay, now, since they moved it back, why didn't they just bring it to, you know, code?
So that would be, that would be, I mean, that would be purchasing a new fence and.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Okay, all right. And it has been relocated, is that what you said?
Yeah, it's completely moved back to the property line.
Okay, so.
You know, it is, it is a corner lot. There are pictures, I'm not sure if you see the fence, but it is in good standing and it actually looks very nice.
You said you submitted pictures?
Yeah, I sent in some pictures, yes.
Mr. Vega, do we have photos?
Mr. Cunha, I do not have any pictures.
Okay.
Ms. Ricardi, is there any pictures in the file? Ms. Shembry, did you email those pictures?
No, I didn't. I dropped them off.
Okay, all right. I see what, I, I understand where you're coming. Now, did you do any research to see if there's any other parcels in the area that are similar in size and have similar setback issues?
No, I didn't, but I do do a lot of work in the area personally. I renovate homes. And I always take care of all the paperwork on them. I just legalized one five four Prince Road. It was a basement job. But we had a fence on a corner lot there that we also moved back. And I had no problem with it. I think that the area is very irregular, a lot of topography going on. And I think that the fence actually looks really nice from the road. I wish you guys had a picture.
I'm showing the pictures.
I think she is, Ms. Ricardi is showing pictures as, as we, as you're speaking.
Okay.
Yeah.
It, it puts them in privacy. They are in a corner lot. And the home is one of the, one of the nicer homes in that immediate area.
Okay, Lori, I can't see that one clearly. What is that? Is that a fence?
Yeah.
Oh, that is the fence. Okay, I see it now. All right.
Okay. And I have the pictures of the pergola and.
And that pergola deck looks actually relatively loaded to ground?
Yeah, it's just a more of a platform.
So what do we look at, about eighteen inches, two feet at the most? Okay, thanks, Lori, I appreciate it.
Okay.
All right, I have no further questions. Do any other board members have questions? And not hearing any, I move to approve the application as presented type two. I think that was a Mr. Lindsay second.
Motion is for grant the application as presented type two by Mr. Cunha, seconded by Mr. Lindsay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Shembry. Have a nice day.
You too.
Okay. Case number eleven, Charles King, thirty-nine Arrowhead Drive, Shirley. Located on the north side of Arrowhead Drive, two hundred and seventy feet east of Alder Lane, Shirley. Applicant requests side yard and rear yard variances for proposed in-ground swimming pool. Side yard variance for existing shed located in the required side yard.
Mr. Lindsay, I have Diane Laspisa for the applicant. Mrs. Laspisa, can I just get your attention for the board's attorney to be sworn?
Is Thomas swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can we just have your appearance for the record?
Diana Laspisa with Moreno Expediting Services, twenty-nine thirty-eight Hempstead Turnpike, Levittown, New York, one one seven five six. Here on behalf of the property owner, Charles and Nicole King. Good afternoon, Vice Chair, Members of the Board, Diana Laspisa. And I'm here on behalf of the property owner and we're requesting permission from the board to install an in-ground swimming pool, which will be sixteen foot by thirty-two foot. In the back left corner of the property. We are also requesting permission to maintain an existing shed. The pool we're proposing is, we're requesting a seven-foot side yard and a seven-foot rear yard. Which will put us actually at six feet off the house. The homeowner is trying to maintain the patio. As, as much as possible. He, he wants to be able to keep the patio. The pool, like I said, will be six feet off the house, which would require an engineer certification. As the code does require ten feet, so bringing it closer to the house is a little bit. You know, a concern for structurally sound. As far as the shed, the shed is under a hundred forty-four square feet. It's actually a hundred square feet. The owner had installed it approximately eleven years ago. He had purchased it and a company came and placed it on the property. At the time, he had called to find out whether he did require a permit and what the setback requirements were. They, he was told about a three-foot setback requirement. However, there was no mention about any requirements regarding the side yard. So he did not realize it wasn't permitted in the side yard. Otherwise, he would have possibly put it in the other corner of the property. But a shed of that size does not usually require a permit. We do know of some other variances that were granted in the area for in-ground pools with seven-foot setbacks. And one is forty-seven Ranch Drive. That was October seventh of two thousand and twenty, case number nineteen. Thirty-four Manor Drive. Oh, you know what? I don't have that hearing date. I can get that for you. The shed is used just for storage. And it's fairly screened from the road. You can only see like the top peak. But the owner does plan on doing some plantings around the perimeter of the pool dividing along the westerly property line. I do have some photos. I didn't print them and submit them, but I do have them. If the board wants to see, I can share screen. And if the board has any questions?
Yes, I have a couple of questions for you. I, I, the case was very well presented, first of all. There's a lot of homework on there. You pretty much took all my questions out for me. I was going to ask, the house is six foot. Ask if there's anything else in the neighborhood around seven-foot setbacks and you got those for us?
Yes.
And how long has the shed been there again?
Eleven years.
Eleven years, very good. Okay, there are other houses in the neighborhood, neighborhood with side yard sheds, whatnot?
Yes, yes, the one directly to the west does have their shed in the side yard, but it's not entirely in the side yard. There's, there's a portion of the shed that does extend into the side yard, but, but it is pretty common.
Okay, I, I have no further questions.
Okay.
Howard?
No question.
Okay. Then I'd like to, I'd like to.
Mr. Lindsay, there are no speakers on this case.
Okay. All right.
Ms. Ricardi, are there any correspondents?
No.
Is there a motion?
This application type two is presented. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion is to grant the application type two as presented, second motion by Mr. Lindsay, seconded by Mr. Lazar. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Laspisa.
Thank you.
Case number twelve, William Young, care of Colleen Montalvo. Care of CKG Permit Service, PO Box eighty-seven Belleport. Located on the south side of South Haven Avenue, one hundred and forty feet west of Babylon Street Mastick. Applicant requests permission for existing conversion of basement to habitable space. Height variance for existing six-foot-high fence located in the front yard.
Mr. Lazar, I have a Claire Greco for the applicant.
Thank you.
Ms. Greco, can I just have you, give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn in?
Is Thomas swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do indeed.
Can we just have your appearance for the record?
My name is Claire Greco from Sanos, CKG Permit Service, offices at Mine Station Court in Belleport. Here for the applicant, Colleen Montalvo, representing the estate of William Young. The application before you today is the third appearance that this property has made before the board. It was before the board in nineteen eighty-five seeking permission for these setbacks as they've been prescribed for a two-story. High ranch. It is an eighty-foot by one hundred-foot wide and deep parcel where typically high ranches are not appropriate. But in this instance, the board saw fit in nineteen eighty-five to, to grant that. The house was built and the CEO was issued for that property in nineteen ninety-two. And the application in eighty-five specifically requested permission for the first floor, the upper level, if you will, to be finished. The application today is to legalize the lower level. The call of the meeting based on the denial reads conversion of basement, but it's actually a high ranch whereby the lower level, it's lower versus upper as opposed to a basement. No portion of the first floor is below grade at walkout. I submitted. I submitted pictures to the board. I dropped them off yesterday depicting front and back and both sides of the house. The board further heard from from the property owners on this file in ninety-two, ninety-five, when a pool permit setback pool setback was thought. And as you can see, the pool was installed. Recently, Mr. Young passed away and the property has been sold. And it was revealed that that pool permit was closed out. And based on the verbiage of the grant from nineteen eighty-five, Senior Building Inspector Angus Graham, in consultation with the zoning board, felt that we needed to appear before the board to legalize now the lower level. We have approximately nine hundred square there is still a one-car garage, as you can see from the pictures. It it was finished very early on in the nineties. It comprises a recreation room with a wet bar and there's a further bedroom and bath, the bath of which was original to the house. And respectfully, we'd we'd like to request that the board review this favorably. It's been this way for many years. The secondary portion of the application concerns some six-foot fencing that's forward at the foundation line, the front foundation line of the house. It's been there for over twenty-five years. You can see poorly, but you can see from the pictures that it's well landscaped and shielded from view. And it most definitely does not provide any sort of slight impairment when you're pulling in or out of the driveway. You can see that there's a large fence between the property line and the actual pavement itself. Does the board have any questions like in the class?
Yes. My name is Charles Lazar. So my original questions were, how do you get to the basement now that you've enlightened me? And that is because of the fact that you have a high ranch. So getting to the lower level would be going in to the platform level and you're going down this internal stairs.
Correct. It's a standard high ranch whereby if you look at the photos submitted, you'll see there's eight steps up to the front door. There's a platform and then you either go up a few steps or down.
Okay, is there is there at the present time? Is there at the present time?
Go ahead.
I beg your pardon?
I didn't say anything. I said, go ahead, sir.
Oh, okay, there's somebody talking over us. When you get to the median level to go downstairs, is there a door separating the that level? No?
No, so no, at at no point was this an apartment. It's always been a little family dwelling and family now that are the estate of the now selling the house with the original builder and owner.
Okay, well, the new owner is assuming this property. There are the people that are going to attend to a to subscribe to making it a residence for another another family? No, why?
No, 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 it's being sold as a it's being sold as a single-family dwelling. There never was an apartment. There is no second kitchen. It is a very traditional high ranch layout. The main kitchen.
So I yeah, thank you, Lori. I can see that. So I'm I'm maybe confused if that's possible as to why are you coming to us to legalize the basement because it's part of the it's part of the environment of a one-family building. Is one family gonna live in here?
Yes. Yes, indeed. There is no intent at any point. There's no apartment aspect to this application. The building department sent us here because it sent us before the board today because at the point that we were renewing our pool permit, the language of the grant from nineteen eighty-five did not specifically permit, if you will, finished space in what they deem to be a lower level. And as you're familiar, of course, under the small lot ordinance, which doesn't really apply in this instance, but normally you would not typically have a high ranch on an eighty-foot-wide lot. Typically, you have to have differing square footages on the first and the second floor. So in this instance, we have more square footage on the upper level and we have lesser on the lower level because of course that's detracted from by the garage. So we have approximately nine hundred on the lower comprised of, as I said, a recreation room, a bathroom, a wet bar and a bedroom. And then a traditional high ranch upper layout, kitchen, open living room, dining room, three bed, third of the bath.
So
No intervening other than privacy doors in the bedrooms.
Thank you. So there this approval or the certificate of occupancy when it was issued stipulated that there could be no habitable space in the in the lower level?
No, sir, it didn't stipulate. There was stipulations for them was the case back when this house was built. The taxes were done these square footage and it's presumed that when Craig Lucas, the inspector of the time, went on site, he this confirmed to the building and the CEO department for appropriate taxing presumably that the lower level was unfinished. It was somewhat common in the eighties that high ranches were built in this fashion due down the line of people possibly coming getting permit to finish it up as recreational space. The bathroom, as I said, was installed original to the original house at the same time as the second story, the upper level was.
Mr. Lazar.
The CEO does actually say unfinished lower level.
Mr. Lazar, the code that she was denied under eight eighty-three B one states that anytime they add square footage to a non-conforming lot, they have to come to the Board of Appeals. It's anything, anything they would do to add livable space would send them to the Board of Appeals.
I see. So I click the light and say, now I know.
This Mr. Lazar, I had those same concerns as well while they were here.
It doesn't seem well, I have no words for it, but let me let me move on to the fence. The six-foot stockade fence is beginning at South Haven Avenue and running south to another fence, which is at the same face of the building. Was that a is that an original installed fence assumed by the new owner or was it installed subsequent?
Okay, so the six-foot fence currently in in cases, the entire parcel with the exception of the frontage, of course, it's been there for the better part of about years or so. Sections have been replaced as needed and they they're very densely screened. You can barely barely see it. I do believe fence on the on the eastern side of the property is ours and I believe the fence that's slightly onto our property line on the western side of the property is actually the neighbors. So it fully, I wasn't even aware that the fencing was an issue until the new survey revealed that it goes forward at the foundation line, which has, of course, with board approval. We really don't want to move the fences. Nothing to be served by moving it. It serves to create privacy in front yards for either neighbor. And there is no, there's no slight impairment if you're reversing into into or out of the driveway.
Well, the other thing I noticed is that the the stockade fence that's that's on the western side of the property from out towards South Haven Avenue runs beyond the property line. Is that still?
So that's if you you look closely and they are small, it goes from a six-foot fence at the end of the property line down to a three-foot fence. It's difficult, but if you read it, it does drop down to a fence.
I can see that. I can see that, but I'm just questioning, is there a possibility we could suggest that you remove the fence beyond the property line?
I don't think that's our fence, but I can certainly speak to the neighbors about it, but it my suggestion that likely the building department will condition the CEO upon removal of any obstruction in the in the town's right-of-way. It's usually a comment that's made perhaps on building permits or certainly by the staff at the point that we secure the building permit.
What do you think about us saying pending an approval, we indicate that it is depending upon the removal of that three-foot-high stockade fence?
I understand your concern and certainly I can agree to that, but with all due respect, sir, I don't believe that that's Mr. Young's fence. I believe it to be the neighboring fence. So my
How how do we get proof? How do we get proof that it is the neighbors?
Well, I'm not really sure quite truthfully, other than moving their door and saying, do you own this fence or do we? The young family have indicated it not to be their fence. So the assumption there then that it would be the neighbors. I'm not sure at what point the neighbor took occupancy. I don't know how long that's been there. Certainly, I'm sure we well, it's encroaching on the town's right-of-way, so it shouldn't be there. So we will definitely make every effort to have it removed, but I can't concede that we can remove that because again, it's not our fence. I can certainly acknowledge to the board that I will send a certified return receipt letter to the neighbors advising them based on this hearing that their fence is is you know, in the wrong place.
Mr. Lazar, they they would have put it on the denial that the fence was in the right-of-way. Had it been their fence, they didn't. They didn't mention it on the denial at all. So I just wanted you to know that they would have on if it was their fence.
Very on top of the fencing.
So in our decision, we'll not reference that stockade fence. In conclusion, I would like to say any and any of the board members have any other further questions? No questions? Any letters, Lori?
I don't have any.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to approve this application as presented. And look for a second.
That can type to action.
Motion is to grant the application as presented type two, seconded by Mr. Burksen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Greco.
Case number thirteen.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Number thirteen, one seventy-six Huguenot Properties Corp., care of Tracy's permits, eighty Terry Street, Patchogue. Property is located on the west side of Huguenot Drive, three hundred and sixty-three feet south of Flower Road, Mastic Beach. Applicant requests front yard setback variances for existing one-story residence addition, existing conversion of porch to habitable space and existing nine-point-seven by eighteen-point-three-foot roof over porch.
Mr. Burksen, I have Tracy Rivera for the applicant. Ms. Rivera, can I just get your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn?
Yes.
I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, not about the truth.
I do.
So Tracy.
Have your appearance for the record, Ms. Rivera.
I'm Tracy Rivera, agent for the applicant, offices located eighty Terry Street, Patchogue, New York, one-one-seven-seven-two. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. I am here representing the property owner, one seventy-six Huguenot Properties Corporation. We're here representing the parcel. The parcel's on a hundred-by-a-hundred-size lot. There is a certificate of zoning compliance issued in nineteen ninety-seven under one-two-four-three-three, which reads one family, one-story, twenty-four-point-two-five by thirty-one-point-three-zero regular residence with eighteen-point-two-five by six-point-two roofs over concrete porch with steps enclosed cellar entrance. The property's owner purchased the property as is upon going to the town back in last March two thousand nineteen. They went to secure an active rental permit, which was under number HR zero-one-six-zero-nine-four. At that point, the town had kind of changed over to the new system. We had the, you know, oh, no, I'm sorry. At that time, the client had gone back and forth to the town and had some issues waiting online, taking too much too much time. Was a little stagnant with moving forward with getting the actual house rental. When he finally was before a permit examiner, they brought it to his attention that there were a few things that were on the property that were not legal. One was the existing porch that was on the CCC had been turned into habitable space and that there was a new roofed-over-front porch that was added to the parcel. That's what we're here before the board today to legalize that porch conversion and the roofed-over porch. There is a survey on record with the town from nineteen ninety-seven that shows the original roofed-over porch that has been now converted over. And then within the last three years, that's when we're figuring that the addition and the conversion of the porch had been added on. I submitted an aerial view. I've also submitted pictures of surrounding homes in the area. We're all kind of familiar with the Mastic Beach area. A lot of the houses are are very non-Cookie Cut. You have some houses that will have front porches that are as small as fifteen feet off the property line. And this is this is really this whole this whole application is very conforming to the area. At this time, I'll address any questions.
Tracy?
Yes.
Burksen.
Hi.
So at the end of the day, as they say, you're holding twenty-five-foot setback from the from the property line?
Let me just look at the survey. Yes, twenty-five foot is the front roofed-over porch.
Okay, and the is that twenty-five foot consistent with some of the properties that are in the area?
Yes, absolutely. When I when I submitted my postings and affidavits to the town, I actually even submitted an aerial and a picture that you can see where the front porch lines up with the property directly to the south. So it's more than conforming.
Okay, so just so the record's clear, there was a porch of about six, six-point-two-five feet across the front. That got converted at at or about the same time that they had they had it. They added an addition to that of an additional three feet. Is that right?
Yes, I'm not really sure when it took place. I know it took place between nineteen ninety-seven and and current state.
And then on top of that, they added a porch of about nine-point-seven feet, which brings us to the twenty-five-foot setback. Is that right?
Yes, that is true. And I know that we are, you know, the code had changed where we're allowed that the six-foot, you know, you know, encroachment into the front yard. So we're really an extra like three-point-three-feet-seven-inches more than what the town allows.
Okay, so just real quick, the back of the survey to the backyard is a roofed roof stoop. Is that part of the application or?
No, that's Yeah, I originally I thought it was, but after reviewing reviewing the denial and the denial I received back, that is not part of the application. That's a mistake on my behalf. We will be legalizing that along with a few other things that need to be legalized on the property, but that's not before the board today. Once the board hopefully looks favorable upon this, we will finish up the CO process and continue with obtaining the house rental that we started to obtain along with, you know, the 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 final inspections to make that a license.
Do any of the board members have any questions? Anthony, is there anybody waiting?
Mr. Burksen, there is no speaker, but I did want to point out that this is a non-resident corporate owner of a parcel.
Yes, that's correct. So is there going to be a is this gonna be sold? Is this gonna be a is this occupied right now?
It is occupied. I did. I did make part of the application that they obtained. They moved forward with obtaining a house rental. That was HR zero-one-six-zero-nine-four. And upon at that time, they actually had rented the property out. The property has been occupied. As we all know, we don't want vacant properties with what's going on in today's world. So there is someone occupying it and we're just moving forward, making the process legal. The house is not going to be sold. It is an active rental property. And as you can see by the pictures taken, the property is pristine.
But you can't get the permit until you can clear up the rest of this.
Correct. We cannot continue with the house rental application that even though the there is a record starter for it, we cannot continue with it until we get the COs for the front porch, that, you know, the porch conversion and that little roofed-over stoop in the back, which is not part of this application.
So Anthony, if we make this subject to the obtaining of a renewal of the rental permit, is does that does that work from an administrative point of view?
Within sixty days.
Yeah, within sixty days.
Sixty days?
Yeah.
Okay.
Would that be sixty days of obtaining the CO? Because we're still gonna have to go through the the plan process, the permit process and the CO process. So if the board was to put on there that we need to get this house rental in sixty days, we all know that that's not gonna happen because we still need to get plans reviewed and we still need to get the permit and the CO. So I mean, if we can put in there that after the CO is obtained, because we're gonna move forward the process, once the CO is obtained, the house rental will be submitted. As soon as I have CO in hand, that house rental will be submitted within thirty days.
Yeah, I think the problem is, though, that sometimes people just don't get the COs for a while.
Okay, but if the board is stating that we have to do this in sixty days, we all know that there's no way that they're able to get if we get the grant, even if I get the grant next week, by the time we go through the permit process and the plan review process, it's gonna be sixty days just to get the permit. So how are we gonna get a house rental if we're only getting a permit for the front porch and habitable space by then? Then we'll be back before the board asking for an extension.
Yeah, I mean.
What about this?
Yeah, well, certainly, you know, if you wanna make that time period longer. And then if you don't get it within that time period, you can just write a letter to the board asking them to modify that time limit.
Okay, I just wanted to do ninety days, a hundred and twenty days, Mr. Burksen.
So if you wanna do ninety days, a hundred and twenty days, Mr. Burksen, whatever.
So why don't we do a hundred and twenty days from today? We're talking about today's date?
Um, it would be from the date that the, you know, their, their letter, their decision letter.
Okay, so uh Trace, is that acceptable to you?
Yes, it is. That, that should be enough time. I mean, we all know that the.
I think, I think the intent is, the intent is clear in terms of the nature of the application.
Okay.
So if there's no questions from the board, I'd make a motion to approve.
I have a question. Hang on a second.
Sorry, Jimmy.
Lori?
Yeah.
Did you show a photo a few minutes ago?
Yes.
Can I see that again, please?
Sure.
This is on Huguenot, right?
Yes.
A little bit more higher? Just a little higher?
You wanna see the porch?
Yeah.
You'll see the porch, and if you kind of look through it, you could see the neighbor next door that has a similar, similar front yard.
Okay, I do see that. I go down this block all the time. I was just curious to see where, you know, see what it is.
It's, it's a blue house with a white porch. It's actually very, it's actually meticulous maintains. You would not even, a lot of rental properties aren't always taken care of, and this one was, is taken care of.
And how long has it been being rented?
I know that he applied for the rent permit in eighteen. I believe he's owned the house for three years. Don't quote me on that. So soon as he, you know, took over the house, he rented it out, like anyone else would. No one's gonna leave the house vacant. You're not purchasing a property to leave it vacant, especially in today's times.
I have nothing for, thank you.
Okay, so um I'm, there's nothing further. I'll make a motion to approve the application as submitted, subject to the applicant renewing or obtaining the rental permit within a hundred and twenty days from the date of the issuance of the grant. Type two.
Thank you.
Second. Motion is to grant the application as submitted type two, subject to the applicant renewing its rental permit for the dwelling within a hundred and twenty-two, twenty days from the issuance of the grant.
But that's what I said. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you.
Okay, um, board members, before I read the next case, can I get you to make a motion to reopen case number nine under the name of Farah?
Show move.
Second.
Okay, um, we had held this over um simply for comments from H D A C. Since that time, we got an email uh from H D A C, and they're saying they take no position. So I don't think we need to hold the case over. Um, if you'd like to make a motion on that case, you can.
Lori, I'd like to make a motion to grant the application type two as presented.
Second.
Motion is to grant the applicant. Motion was to reopen case number nine um in the name of Alicia and Joseph Farah. On that motion was passed. There was a motion on the table to grant the application submitted.
Type two.
Type two uh as presented by Mr. Lindsay, seconded by
Cunha.
Mr. Cunha. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, case number fourteen, Michael Vandenberg, care of Andrew Malguanera. Properties located on the west side of White Burke Circle, seventy-six feet south of White Burke Circle, Miller Place. Applicant requests side yard variances for existing detached garage located in the required side yard and for existing tennis court. Also height variance for existing eight-foot-high fence around said tennis court. Amy, were you here to hear that we reopen number, case number nine, Farah? Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Mazzarella, I have uh Amy DeVito for the applicant. Can we just have your appearance for the record, Ms. DeVito?
Amy DeVito with offices at ten thirty-one Main Street, Port Jefferson, New York, one-one-seven-seven-seven, here on behalf of Andrew Malguanera for the applicant.
What would you like to present?
Hi, Mr. Mazzarella and members of the board. Um, okay, so we are uh legalizing or uh we're legalizing a few things, but we are here today for the detached garage on the um north side of the property, and then the tennis court, which has an eight-foot fence around it. Both of these improvements have existed since prior to my client's ownership. He purchased in twenty thirteen. The house was C O'd in nineteen ninety-six, and the, both the tennis court and the detached garage appear in the two thousand and one aerials. So it was built at some point either in two thousand and one or prior to two thousand and one, so they've existed for quite some time, at least twenty years. The purpose of the eight-foot fence around the tennis court is obviously to prevent, prevent uh the tennis balls from flying, you know, out of the court and into neighboring properties, and it's just a typical tennis court configuration. The purpose of the garage, we presume, was uh, you know, for extra car storage at the time when it was built by the prior owner. Uh, my client actually does use it for his car storage. Um, we did submit some photos of the interior of the garage as well. You could see here that that was the uh, the front. Now, this is the interior, the photo to the left, as well as a, a photo of the um the uh tennis court. The, the, the sport court and the, the accessory structure in the side yard actually doesn't seem to be out of character for the neighborhood based on just reviewing aerials. There's actually a sport court right next door to the property, which I guess would be to the uh west of the property. Uh, if you look in the, I'm sorry, uh, the uh north of the property, if you look to the neighboring properties to the north, you can see a sport court in their rear yard as well. Um, I, I'm not sure if there's any fencing around that court, but it is of similar nature to what we are legalizing today. And if you look at the aerials around the neighborhood, you do see that there are some accessory structures and side yards. This is one of the larger lots in the neighborhood. Um, so although the uh, the garage itself is um in the required side yard, it does maintain at the front part of the garage a seventeen-foot setback. And as the property curves in, that setback gets lesser. So I am happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, Amy.
You're welcome.
Anthony, can you bring up the uh aerial a little, a little more than uh you have it there now?
Is that close? Does that zoom better?
Yeah, that's okay.
Do I can zoom more if you want?
The sport court is on fifty-one?
Yeah, the neighboring property has a sport court right next door.
Okay.
And like I said, I'm not sure if there's any fencing on it. I haven't been in their rear yard, but it is of similar nature to um the tennis court.
All right, and it appears that uh in the area of the court, um, even to the property, the other side, number forty-seven, um, that, that tennis court uh appears to be adjacent to um, you know, pretty deep into the backyard of the neighbor.
Yes.
Forty-seven. And uh I'm trying to look at forty-seven Miller Place Road. Looks like it backs up into maybe, do they have a pool in that yard? Is that a covered pool?
Yeah, that looks like a covered pool. Um, and again, the sport court, or the tennis court, rather, does abut up, you know, to their, that uh parcel.
And on uh, and then on forty-nine Miller Place Road, again, looks like their tennis court is abutting uh what looks like a pretty deep backyard there, too.
That's correct.
And the reason I state this is only because um, so if those people or anything like me and my friends, when we play tennis, there's a lot of banter going on, and I would just submit that um there's no um disruptions to uh, to the neighbors when the court is being used. So to your knowledge, do you have any uh, any comments from the neighbors at all uh about uh, about the, the court being so close?
Uh, we have not received any correspondence. I'm not sure if the uh board um has received any correspondence, but we.
I, I haven't received anything.
Okay.
Uh, as far as the garage goes, self-explanatory, I understand, I see the curvature of the yard. The garage looks very nice, doesn't appear to be used uh for any other purpose but car storage from the photographs that have been submitted. And uh, the only thing that I have left is if there are any questions from uh anyone that's come on, Anthony, or if there's any other questions from other board members.
Mr. Mazzarella, I do not have any speakers on this case.
I have a question, Mr. Mazzarella. In one of the pictures that's on the screen now, I see that there's a pull-down uh ladder uh that goes up to the attic.
Yes.
Based on that, is that just attic space storage? Is there anybody, anything in this garage or in the attic that resembles any uh heating, ventilating, air conditioning, plumbing, or electrical equipment, except electrical, because it looks like garage lights are on right now?
I uh have not personally been up in this attic. I haven't, I haven't actually been in the garage, so I, I couldn't say with one hundred percent certainty, but I will say that it is highly unlikely that there is anything other than unfinished attic storage, being that it is just a set of attic stairs to access the uh area.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, Jimmy, I have a question.
Got it, Rick.
Amy, uh, in the photo, I see one, two, three, maybe four, five lights.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm just curious as to height wattage and if they conform with uh the dark side, the sky's ordinance. And did you look into it?
They, they actually, just based on uh the, the shape of them, it does actually look like they are a dark side compliant light fixture. Um, I don't know the wattage, and I will just look quickly to see if there's any notes in Mr. Malguanera's file to that effect. If not, we could most certainly find that out.
Because as you know, the code, they're, you know, maximum twenty feet high, and I really can't estimate off this picture how high they are. They look to be under twenty feet, but I'm not sure of this.
Yeah.
And they're not shown on this, they're not shown on the survey, and that's the issue.
Now, based on the eight-foot fencing, they don't appear, they appear to be maybe another seven to eight feet above the eight-foot fencing, so I, I think we actually would be in compliance with the height. There's no notes in the file that I could see, um, but when we, uh, when Mr. Malguanera's office proceeds with permits and obviously inspections, et cetera, um, I'm sure that the building department is going to make it subject to these lights complying with uh standard code.
I'm just trying to save you a trip back, basically.
Yes, I understand. Um, like I said, we could, we could hold it over until um uh February to make sure that they are the proper height. I am unsure if Mr. Malguanera's office has already looked into this or not, and has already um resolved that matter. We could uh, otherwise, we would, like I said, um, have to comply.
I, I'll leave that up to Mr. Mazzarella.
I have a question.
Sure, Mr. Lindsay.
Um, this is just for uh, probably for Lori. Wouldn't the town, whenever they go to go over everything, look at that before they would uh issue all their permits, correct?
Well, it's not on the survey, so they, I don't know that they would.
I don't know if they would have um addressed that. It's not on the denial. If it's not shown on the survey, they probably, the, the permits examiner probably wouldn't have, you know, addressed it at all if they didn't see it on the survey.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to avoid holding it over, just for, that's all. It's not on there.
I mean, if it doesn't comply, they're going, they're going to send her back. They're gonna send them back if it doesn't.
They'll be back, Ronnie, four months from now.
Yeah.
Uh, either that or they could, they could um, you know, reduce the height of the fixtures, either by installing different fixtures or, or somehow lowering these, but I, I, I don't believe that they're, they do look like they're probably only about eighteen feet or so um at best. So um, I'm going to request that we hold over if I may. I don't know enough about it to, to make a, an informed decision at this point.
Okay, so that would be February tenth.
Okay, so we'll hold over to February tenth, if, if.
So, so motion is to hold over till February tenth. I got a second?
Second.
Motion is to hold over till February tenth, seconded by Mr. Wisdom. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carrier.
Thank you.
Case number fifteen, Ernestine Cruz, care of Andrew Malguanera, located on the north side of Barber Drive, ninety-eight feet west of Eastwood Boulevard, Centerreach. Applicant requests height variance for existing six-foot-high fence located in the front yard, side yard variance for existing deck, rear yard variance for existing shed.
Mr. Wisdom, I have Amy DeVito for the applicant.
Thank you.
Mr. DeVito, can we just have your appearance for the record?
Sure, Amy DeVito, ten thirty-one Main Street, Port Jefferson, New York, one-one-seven-seven-seven, here on behalf of Andrew Malguanera for the applicant. Uh, so Mr. Wisdom, with, excuse me, Mr. Wisdom and members of the board. My uh clients actually purchased just last year in twenty-twenty. Uh, the improvements in question today existed prior to their ownership. Uh, according to aerials, the shed and the fence both existed in two thousand and one, if not sooner. The deck appears in the two thousand and four aerial, so it was built sometime between two thousand and one and two thousand and four. The property is pie-shaped. It's a, a bit of a, of unique configuration, which is um why the deck is brought in a little bit closer to the property line, uh, and we're about a half a foot off on, on the required setback. Uh, the stockade fence, um, i- i- it just looks like they tried to maximize their side yard a bit, so they, they took it a little bit further down onto their uh, their um east lot line, uh, which is why it curves, it curves towards the south and um and closes off the rear yard, uh, the side yard, rather, at that point. So it does encroach just a bit uh towards the front of the house. And the um shed, which was erected near the in-ground pool behind it, uh, there, there's really not much um in the way of, of rear yard area on this property, because there, it is a pretty large in-ground pool, and there's um, there's really not much area before the pool to place any accessory structures, which is why they chose to put it behind the pool, uh, you know, tucked uh back in the corner, and I, it looks like they tried to maintain as much of a setback as they could, but only made it at one-point-three feet. Um, this doesn't appear to be out of character for the neighborhood. Uh, most lots are pretty similar in size, but this one is a unique shape, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Let's start with the deck. Uh, with, how long has that been there?
The deck uh appears in the two thousand and four aerial, so it was built sometime between two thousand and one and two thousand and four.
Okay. Let's just think, say, two thousand and one. Okay, and there have been no complaints or anything like that from the neighbors?
Not that we know of.
Okay, and you're asking for a existing shed variance in the rear?
Correct.
Which is holding a one-point-three. Is that common in, in the neighborhood?
Uh, based on what can the arrows, yes, it appears to be very common.
Okay. Um, and um, the six-foot-high fence that runs along the side, that would be the east side of the, of the property?
Correct.
And, and on the other side of the property is a six-foot P, PVC fence also, uh, on the west side.
Yes, and that setback behind the uh garage.
Yes, and the setback behind the garage. So this is not out of character for the neighborhood at all, and I could see by the pictures that uh, it uh, you know, I could see that the fences and the houses are pretty close to each other. Have they, have there been any uh complaints from the neighbors or anything like that?
Not that we've been, made, been made aware.
There are, are there any rentals going on in this house?
I um, I don't believe so, but I have not, I believe that the um owners are owner occupants. I have not personally been inside the house to inspect it. Um, as you know, I am covering this case for Mr. Malguanera, so I, I couldn't say for sure, but there's nothing that leads me to believe that there is.
As I see a photo where there's the, the second floor on part of the house.
Mm-hmm.
And the, I guess that's the rear portion of the house where the pitched roof is facing where the deck is?
That's correct.
Is there, is there an access out of the house from those levels?
So there's, the only, um, I see that there's a cellar entrance on the east side. Um, whether that leads to a finished or unfinished basement, I am unsure. I thought I might have saw a C O in this file.
You're not asking for anything for the cellar entrance, correct?
Yeah, I'm just discussing um any kind of alternate ingress or egress other than the front door. I see the slider in the rear, and I don't have a photo of the um elevation that you're questioning, so I actually, I can't answer. So I actually, I can't answer the question if there's any door over there. I'm assuming there is it, or at least access in the interior, of course.
So and there's a front door to the house where the porch is?
In the front, yes.
In the front?
Yes.
And is there anything out back on the, on the first wall?
Just the sliding glass door that you see that goes off the deck.
Okay. I have nothing further.
Any board members have any questions?
Yeah, anybody have any questions about this?
I don't have any comments from the neighbors on this.
I do not have any speakers on this.
Okay.
Uh, your motion?
I'll make a motion to grant the application type two.
Second.
Motion is to grant the application as presented type two, seconded by Mr. Lindsay. All. Excuse me.
Thank you, Jackson.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Case number 16, Gladys and Joseph Hewer, 16 Pine Cone Street, Middle Island. Properties located on the west side Pine Cone Street, 515 feet south of Raymond Avenue, Middle Island. Applicant requests permission for existing conversion of attached garage to habitable space.
Mr. Cunha, I have a Mr. Lou Gallo for the applicant.
See him yet?
Good afternoon, members of the board.
Mr. Gallo, can I just have you, have you give your attention to the board attorney to be sworn in?
You saw me swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
Your appearance for the record?
Lou Gallo, Lou Gallo Expediting Incorporated, 218 Harrison Avenue, Miller Place, 11764, agent for the applicant. I have before you, if Anthony would bring it up via the survey, I have before you an existing, thank you, an existing full garage conversion with an overage on the first floor as far as the square footage is concerned. We're holding 1,700 and this is on a 75 foot lot. We're holding 1,707.88 square feet when 1,200 is required. This particular full garage conversion consists of a family room, a playroom, a pantry, and storage. The conversion was done in 1993. And if you bring up the pictures, Anthony, that I've given, you've got those pictures?
No, one moment.
Okay.
Did you, Mr. Gallo, did you email me those photos?
Uh, no, I brought them in, the package.
Okay.
And maybe Lori has them.
Yeah, just in the future, you know, when you submit the photos, if you can submit a PDF to Lori and I, so that way I can put it up on the screen.
Okay, fine and dandy. Well, I do have pictures and has Lori got, got the pictures at all?
She has the picture. She's gonna put them up to the board.
Okay.
She's gonna hold them up. She's gonna remove it.
Okay, I want to show you that the character of the neighborhood is such as, the same as the applicant here regarding garage conversions. In fact, I've gotten four pictures, one down the block on a 75 foot square, 75 foot lot, has a garage conversion. And on the next street, White Oak Street, there are three garage conversions on 50 foot lots. So in that regard, the character of the neighborhood has been met. There's no undesirable change or adverse impact since the character of the neighborhood is garage conversions. And there were some more. I just gave you the four. So respectfully request that the board grant a relief.
Good afternoon, Mr. Gallo, how are you?
Good afternoon.
Um, okay, so very, very well done. I, I like the photos of all the houses that in the neighborhood. You said that the neighborhood is, uh, this is basically, all these houses are on 75 footers? Is that what you're saying?
The first one, picture number four, if you look on the back, I put, you know, identification. Picture number four is 7 Pine Cone Street. That's down the block. That's a 75 footer. All the other three are on 50 foot lots.
Okay. All right, and you said that the garage conversion just converted the existing garage. It was in, in the early 90s, 91, you said?
Yeah, 93, 1993.
And it's a den, or I'm sorry, a living room and what?
It was a family room, a playroom, a pantry, a small pantry, and storage space.
Okay, and now, um, so I don't, maybe you have it, so I don't have to go and do all the math, but we're looking at just about 2,000 square feet on the first floor. Is that correct?
Well, it comes out to 1,700 square feet.
1,700, okay.
1,200 is required. I measured exactly at 1,707.88.
Okay, and you're saying 1,200 is required under the small lot ordinance?
Exactly, for a 75 foot lot, yes.
However, when the house was constructed, it was probably under a different zoning and was, would have been allowed at the time.
It's a one.
Okay, uh, no further questions. Any board members have any questions? Hearing that, I'd like to make a, a motion to grant the application as presented type two.
Second.
Anthony, Anthony, I forgot to ask if there was any, anybody waiting, sorry.
Do not have any speakers on the case.
I don't have any correspondence.
I apologize. Now I make the motion to grant the application as presented.
Second.
Motion is to grant the application type two as presented, seconded by Mr. Lindsay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo.
Thank you.
Case number 17, Charles and Christina Davis, 40 Robinson Street, Centermore Riches. Properties located on the west side of Robinson Street, 1,925 feet north of Frauene Road, Centermore Riches. Applicant requests rear yard variance for proposed one-story residence addition, side yard variance for existing shed located in the required side yard.
Mr. Lindsay, I have Larry Davis for the applicant. Sir Davis, can I just have, on the record reflect that Mr. Cunha is recused from the application. Mr. Davis, you are an attorney, so you don't need to be sworn. But can we have your appearance for the record?
Thank you, Mr. Vega. Larry Davis, 175 Oak Street, Hatchburg, New York, for the applicant.
Thank you, who would you like to present?
Uh, good afternoon, board members. I represent Chuck and Christina Davis in the application for a, an addition that they'd like to put on their rear of their house. They presently have a deck that encompasses most of the area that they are looking to build their addition. They are asking for an additional two feet in the rear yard from what the, the existing deck already encompasses. And we're asking for approval on that. And there is also an existing shed in the side yard. And I just wanted the board to note that is the best situated location for that shed as if we put it in the southwestern corner of the property, that's on a steeper slope. It, it doesn't, it doesn't fit properly. It would, it would have a grading problem. So the other part of it is, there is, there are actually no neighbors directly to the south of the property nor to the west of the property. It's all vacant land. So there's no impact on any neighbors by having this application approved today. If the board has any questions, I would be more than happy to answer.
Yes, Mr. Davis, how are you this afternoon? It's Mr. Lindsay here.
Very well, Mr. Lindsay, how are you? Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to yourself. Um, question, what are they gonna be using the addition for?
Gonna be ma- basically a three-season sunroom.
Okay, it's gonna be a sunroom?
Yes.
Okay, why didn't they just come for a sunroom then? I guess, I guess it don't matter.
Well, that's what the denial had. The denial has a sunroom.
Oh, it does?
Yes.
Okay, okay, um, next question, where the shed is along the, the side road there, that's a very busy road, correct?
No, that's a dead end.
Oh, it's a dead end over there?
Yes, Robinson Street dead end, right at my brother's house.
Oh, it's your brother's house?
Yes.
I did not know that. Okay, not to the mixed difference. Um, and what do they use the shed for?
Um, I, I supplied pictures. It's just for storage. It's a small shed. It's only 7.8 by 9.8. It's a very small shed.
Very small shed. Okay, and how, how long is that? Not to the matters, how long's the deck been there?
Deck was built with the original house in 2002 and the shed's been there for about five years.
Okay, and the, and the, as you said, the extension is basically gonna be the same size as the deck?
It'll be two feet wider and two feet longer.
I see that on, I see that on the plan now. Okay, I see that. Okay, I have no further questions. Is there any question?
Any other questions for the board?
Um, I just wanna, I'm just looking through the file. I'm missing some things in this file. I don't know if you just want to address it. I don't have COs or permits for some structures. The cellar entrance, the pool equipment in the side yard. Um, that's in the required side yard. Um, I think that needs a variance. It wasn't on the denial. There's a wood platform, there are steps in the side yard. I don't have, you know how we take COs and permits with the application? I don't see any of that here. And I do believe that.
I'm sorry.
It's okay, go ahead.
No, I was going to say, we do have a CO for the exterior cellar entrance. I believe the pool, the pool was built prior to them requiring anything. The pool had, was CO'd in.
No, the pool, yeah, I have something for the pool, but there's, um, hold on, let me look at the survey again.
Does the pool?
Yeah, there's pool equipment that's located in the required side yard. There's no CO for that in the required side yard.
Okay, that's been there since the original pool was built in 2004.
I know, but it's.
Requirement back then, and I think that should be grandfathered in. I don't believe that we should be required to get a variance for something that has been approved and been existing since it was originally built.
Um, I don't know if you want to check that out with the building department. I believe it needs a variance. The other thing is there's some kind of waterfall feature off of the in-ground pool. I know the board granted a 10-foot setback for the pool. I don't know about that water feature that brings it closer than what the board granted.
Again, that, sorry.
No, no.
Again, that was built with the original pool.
It wasn't part of the zoning board application though, back then.
Okay. So what, what would you like, Mr. Cardy, how would you like being to handle this?
I'm just, I'm just bringing it to the board's attention. I, um, I believe that we need to make sure these things are, either have permits or COs, or I'm, I'm not sure if they need a variance. I'm, I'm pretty sure that, that pool equipment definitely needs a variance.
So Lori, why don't, uh, while we seem to have a somewhat of a different opinion of two very experienced people in this matter. So why don't we give Mr. Davis a chance to try to straighten this out and put it over for a couple of weeks? And, and if he can establish that it was all part of the same applications with the pool or, and/or that a variance or it didn't have to be at the time, then we can proceed, but it, right now it was sort of stuck, I think.
I. You want to hold it over just to get clarification, that's fine. The other thought would be that pool equipment is in the side, is, does it a variance? The other option would be just to move it slightly south. It's, it was no longer in the side yard. Cause right now it's in the side yard. Or it's at the very edge of the house right now. So I'm, I'm not sure how extensive it is, but I, that's another option as well. It, it indeed needs a variance, but I look honestly, the person who got into that question to do that, chief building inspector or one of his review.
Yeah, Angus could straighten that out.
Well, can I, can I ask? Because I think if, when I go for permits for these items, I only know that the CO department is going to require, and they're gonna look at this very extensively to make sure that everything's in compliance. Can we move forward today and get this part of it resolved? And, you know, those other issues are gonna have to take care of themselves.
Well, honestly, had I seen this application when it was filed, I probably would have kicked it back to you because it wasn't complete. You know, would have asked for all those things at the time of filing. The way things are now with, you know, working from home, I just got a chance to see this now.
I understand, and that's fine. Larry, I really think it'd be better just to put it over for a couple of weeks. And if you can straighten it out, great. If not, you, you know what you have to do, so. Right, I understand. Whatever the board recommends is fine by me.
I have a question. Case, why are we picking out stuff for variances that didn't come, that wasn't needed for a very, to begin with?
Well, I have oversight by the building department.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, it might, it also might not be, so. My only caution on that is that I think that there is a point here that the, that the building department would ultimately have to CO and they might find other things, that certainly does happen, but they would send them back. But it might be prudent to just get it clarified or to find out what, if anything, needs a variance, whether the waterfall even needs a variance. I'm not, I don't know the answer to that question myself, right? I'd have to research that myself.
So.
Yeah, so Angus giving analysis might be the fastest way because he might just say, he might, the answer might be yes to both, no to both. Yes, one, no to no, one. In the case of the pool equipment, particularly, getting a variance for it is an option or the more expedient thing might be to move it further into the backyard. I mean, I'm, I, that's up to the applicant, I'm just saying that they, it might not even, the solution to fixing this might need, might not be the applicant needing to get another variance. It might be another solution that they undertake, they don't need a variance. I mean, that's the other thing.
Yeah, I think, I think the cleanest, the cleanest way I think to do it is to, for Larry, you know, to, to speak with Angus and see what needs variances and what doesn't. Cause if you need a variance for the pool equipment, there's gonna be a penalty fee. We gotta advertise it, we gotta re-notify neighbors. So you might want to do that while the application's still open. If you close the case, then you're gonna have to file a brand new application for those variances. That's more application fees. You know what I mean? While it's open, you can still get an amended denial for all these things if needed. And then we can just re-advertise, re-notify and hear it as a holdover. But I think that you should, we should find out.
Especially on the case of the waterfall, because, uh,
Yeah.
that looks like a, I don't, that is something that may or may not need a variance. That's the real, the real thing. Pool equipment, I think we have a better idea, but honestly Angus would give the better answer on that.
Yeah, I think the decks and the cellar entrances and stuff like that probably just need permits. I, the waterfall and the pool equipment though, looks like it needs a variance, to me, anyway.
So I, I, I mean, I'll, I'll, I will definitely go talk to Mr. Graham and discuss both of these issues. But I, the fact that the pool equipment has been there, and by the way, moving it is not gonna be the easiest thing to do as there are pavers all around the pool. And to ask us to move it is, I think, more burdensome than, than getting a variance. But again, this was in 2004 and we have a CO for it.
You have a CO for the pool equipment?
No, we have a CO for the pool, but it was built with the equipment and it was inspected and approved when it was built. Nothing has moved since that original pool was built in 2004.
I mean, that's interesting. I would just like to see what, uh, if, if the pool equipment accounted for in that CO approval. That's, that's important as well. I mean, it might be, I'd like to see if it's there and accounted for. That's another thing, Angus clarify whether it already is. Angus, that's why it might be wise to talk to Angus. He might actually take that opinion as well and say that this is the CO and is part of the pool and you don't need to do anything of it. It's just, uh, that's an interesting argument there, but we don't have that pit work in front of us either. But that's another factor there where, you know.
Larry, you want to get the permit for the, for the, uh,
Extension?
For the room? Yes. Yes.
So they can forward with that, correct, Larry?
I, I'm sorry, Mr. Lindsay, you broke up. You'd rather, you'd rather take the chance of having to do a new application?
Our.
Yes. Get the permit. I'm sorry.
So you'd rather, so you'd rather go forward to hearing here and then you have to come back to everything else, so be it?
If I have to come back to another hearing, I'll come back to another hearing. To hold it over and then have to amend a hearing, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be. If I have to come back to another hearing, I'll come back to another hearing, to hold it over and then have to amend a hearing. I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be in this for months anyway, because I'd have to. Get a new application, get a new revision, get a new denial, get new, um, mailings, get new, um, postings. It it would be the same process one way or another. The only thing that I would not have to pay is, it, the only thing I will have to pay is an additional fee.
Well, um, I mean, like I said, under normal circumstances, this application would have never gotten filed like this in the first place.
Look, can I ask what the, what the setback is for pool equipment in the side yard?
Well, it's not because it's in the required side yard. That's the problem. That's different. In the required side yard, what zone are you in? A one? Twenty-five feet is the requirement. It's different than a regular side yard.
And it's, and that's what I I see it too. It it happens between the, have a house in the, uh, sorry.
Yeah.
In the house, it's just back and dab in the middle of it. So, I mean, it's not a substantial variance necessarily, but it's.
Yeah, I've just gone back and forth with Angus on a bunch of applications involving pool equipment and side yards, and he determined that. It is not permitted in the required side yard. So that's why that's kind of sticking out for me.
Um, I, just to advise the board, uh, certainly counsel's been advised both ways, uh, what if. If he decided to hold it over, what he might have to do, if he decides to go forward, and what he might have to do to come back. So, uh, he certainly is aware of every option here, I think. So that's up to the board here. How they want to.
Larry, are you worried about coming back, Larry?
I'm never worried about coming back. I'm just trying to expedite. My brother's application for his permit so he can enjoy the sunroom in the spring and the summer and get this thing built over the winter. That's what I'm trying to.
So, so if this goes through today, and you gotta come back, that's on you then. You're, you're willing.
Yes, that would, yes, that would be on me, and I have no, no problem with that at all.
Okay.
Can I just ask, John, is there, other than it deviates from what Lori, what our usual practice would be, and I understand Lori's concern. Uh, uh, is the board, as is, as the, uh, as the board prejudiced by doing this? Is there, is there some, uh, if if it turns out that, uh, a permit is required for the, or the variance is required for the, uh, for the pool equipment?
No.
We can specifically get that information from, uh, from Angus and Angus and just not let it just slip by, so.
Well, I mean, the, the, the application as it exists and the grant that will be given, say, a grant was given, is restricted to what the grant. Provide, not, it doesn't make any other condition legal that was otherwise illegal or needed a variance. It doesn't do that. So that, that, uh. So that is absolutely true. I I would say also that certainly we've had discussion on the record. Uh, Mr. Davis has been very, uh. Uh, from us as well about he understands the, uh, situation here, but he might, he might have to come back. So I think that there's no confusion here between anyone, really. Uh, we've had, I think, a very extensive combination that's now on the record, that, uh, if he holds it over, he might amend the application. If he doesn't hold it over, he might have to come back and get another variance later. I think that either way, he, both of those contingencies have been spelled out to the applicant, and I would say they understand that. And it stays, you'd say that's a fair assessment of the situation.
Absolutely, Mr. Doyle. Um, you couldn't have laid it out any better.
So, so I guess somebody should make a motion. Ronnie, you want to do that?
Yeah, I might. Okay. Are we gonna, I'd like to hold this over.
Yeah, do you want, you want to, do you want to grant it? Do you want to grant it? Or do you want to hold it over, Ronnie?
No, my.
It's clean, it's cleaner if you hold it over. Um, I just want to put that out there.
What?
It's cleaner if you hold it over and we get the question answered. Um, that's just my opinion. I just want to let you know that.
Okay.
We hold it over just for the next meeting, then, you think? Do they have enough time?
Well, we'd hold it over to, um, February tenth, because that's within the thirty days. He doesn't have to re-notify. Um, and then if he did need a variance, that would possibly give us time to get the legal ad in for that hearing. It depends on how quickly he can get. Those questions answered. We're gonna be ready to advertise February tenth in like two weeks, so that would work out.
Wait a minute. Hold on, hold on, Lori. If I, if you, if, let's say there is a variance needed.
Yes.
Wouldn't I have to go and re-notice and re-mail because that relief wasn't requested originally?
Yes, but what I'm saying is if we give you February tenth. Okay, and you can find, let's say you can find this information out in the next week. Okay, then we, we have enough time to add this to the legal ads for February tenth. You will have enough time to re-notify the neighbors for February tenth. So you're not losing anything.
Okay, so. But then let me play devil's advocate, since if I'm gonna have to do it one, one way or the other. Whether it's by a new application or by amending this application. I still have to repost and re-mail. I would rather close this hearing and deal with these two items, and if I have to come back, yes, it's on me for those other items. I will be more than happy to come back. In the meantime, I will be able to get a permit and start construction, so my brother can enjoy that room, which is his intent to do so for as long as he can.
It's up to the board. I was, I'm just gave my opinion. It's up to the board, not me.
And Larry, just to clarify, uh, just the board's aware, uh, the way I see it, you're spelling out here is that you're led to get a permit to start the work, even if. Another variance is required for you to get the final C O, you're, you're okay at that path. That's basically the path you're spelling out. I just wanted to clarify that the people might not understand that. It's the final C O where all variance is no, is not in compliance, have to be resolved before you get the final C O, not the permit.
Larry, were you agreed to like, pu- pu- provide us with, affirmatively with the, uh, with the building inspector's, uh, response with respect to those two issues?
Most definitely. I will see Mr. Graham before the week is out.
Mr. Lindsay, you're on mute.
Can this be post, held till the twenty-seventh?
Of January?
Yes.
I, I don't think that would be enough time for Mr. Davis to get the required answer he needed from the building department. Plus the app, plus if the answers were that he needed the variances, there wouldn't be enough time for him to advertise.
That's why I thought February tenth was just a safe date. We could, no matter what happens, we could work it out.
Can I also put it out there that the building department is extremely behind in issuing building permits? And to have plans reviewed and issue a building permit is probably gonna take sixty to ninety days from the approval. This is not, it's not like I'm losing two weeks. I'm losing months every time I have to come back on this matter. So I would really request that we would close it, and I will deal with the issues of the pool equipment and the waterfall at a different time. If, if Mr. Graham requires that I do so.
Up to the board.
Wow. I, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, and everybody can make up their own mind. Given the circumstances, the nature of the application, the nature of the issues. And the nature of the representation by Mr. Davis, uh, about following through with this. And bringing these issues specifically to Angus's, uh, attention. Uh, I'm okay with it.
It's a tough call.
I like to close and.
Motion.
Motion to close and hold.
Second. Motion is to close and hold by Mr. Lindsay, seconded by Mr. Lazaru. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you all very much, Lori. I'll be in touch with you as soon as I speak to Mr. Graham.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, bye-bye, guys.
Night.
Um, case number eighteen, Kevin Gilbert, care of Michelle Cotrally, one hundred Colonial Drive, East Patchogue. Properties located on the west side of Old Medford Avenue, two hundred and twelve feet north of Katy Drive, Medford. Applicant requests rear yard variance for proposed one-story residence addition.
Mr. Lazaru, I have Michelle Cotrally for the applicant. Um, Miss Cotrally, can you just give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn? You saw me swear to tell the truth, the whole of the butthook. Miss Cotrally, we can't hear you.
I'm muted. Can you hear me?
So you saw me swear to tell the truth, the whole of the butthook.
I do.
Can you just have your appearance for the record?
Michelle Cotrally, agent for the applicant, one hundred Colonial Drive, East Patchogue, New York, one-one-seven-seven-two.
Thank you.
Uh, members of the board, I'm here representing Mr. Gilbert. He's the owner of the property since nineteen eighty-two. Uh, we're requesting to construct an eleven-by-twenty addition in the rear of his house, a rear of his property, where the deck presently exists. The addition will maintain a thirty-four-point-seven-foot rear yard setback where sixty is required in an A-one residential zone. But as you can see, the house doesn't even hold a sixty-foot, uh, rear yard. Presently, this house only has an eleven-by-twelve eat-in kitchen with no dining room. That's about a hundred and thirty-two square feet for a kitchen and. And, uh, live, uh, eat-in space. This two-hundred-and-twenty-five-square-foot addition will be the new kitchen, and the existing kitchen will become the new dining room. Um, this property is one of the smallest in the area and has been a filed lot since, uh, nineteen hundred. There's no other location for Mr. Gilbert to increase his kitchen space, uh, without coming before this board for some type of area variance. And as you can see, this proposed addition would really only be encroaching an additional six feet into the established rear yard, and that's due to that south-side addition in the rear. Um, we believe this area variance is minor in nature and will not create an adverse condition in the area, nor would impede anybody, any of the surrounding neighbors' privacies. Um, and if the board has any questions, I'd like to entertain them.
Yes, Miss Cotrally, this is Charles Lazaru.
Hi, Mr. Lazaru.
You can hear me fine?
Yes, I can, sir.
Good. Um. One of my questions that I, as I was perusing and you were speaking, um, was that. We recognize that the house at the present time doesn't even maintain the required rear yard. And, uh, you're intending to add this to the present, this would be in the footprint of what is the present deck?
Yes.
Is it, is it, is it approximately the same size as the present deck footprint?
Um, yes, it is.
It is. And you said this would be principal, principally?
Next week, maybe, who knows?
Hello?
Right.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Get your mics on.
No, I'm sorry. We had somebody else with an open mic.
Okay.
Um. This, um, addition was for, the purpose was for a eat-in kitchen, you said?
No, presently, they have an.
They have an eat-in kitchen, yes.
It's very small. It's only about eleven by, um, I think my notes said eleven by twelve. Yes, eleven by twelve. That's with kitchen cabinets, plus a little small table. They have.
And this would be what, a dining area?
The old kitchen, uh, would become the dining area. That's where that bay window is, and then the new addition will become their kitchen.
I see. Okay. Um. And then this, this, uh, this other. Paver patio, so that's, that's on ground, isn't it?
Yes.
That would, is it, is it there presently?
Yes.
It is. It's existing. All right. So you had a deck, and then you had stairs going down to the. I, yeah, I can see it in one of the pictures on the screen now. All right. Um, let's go back to the aerial. Anthony, please. I can see that we can all recognize that that piece of property is rather small compared to those that are surrounding. And because of the multi-sided piece of property, number three, that it backs up to, to the west. It leaves a lot of open area between the back of that building where the addition proposed is and their rear yard. Seven-eighty-six to the north is pretty far away, and to the south is pretty far away. So. Have you received any objections to the neighbors since the posting?
No, I have not. I asked my client if he has, uh, any of the neighbors came and spoke to him, and no one has come about.
So no one's come forward to make any objections. Anthony, do we have any speakers on this?
Mr. Lazaru, we do not have any speakers on this case.
Okay. Um. I would say, um, let's, uh, make a decision on this, and the motion on my part would be, uh, to grant as presented.
Thank you.
Motion is to grant the application as presented, type two by Mr. Lazaru, seconded by Mr. Wisdom. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Have a good night, Michelle.
Good night.
Um, can I get the board to make a motion to, um, take a short recess?
I'll move.
Motion to, for fifteen-minute recess by Mr. Cunha, seconded by Mr. Lazaru. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. To all that are still here, we will be resuming back approximately at four fifty.
Anthony, I'm gonna be moving, so I may be a couple of minutes if, uh.
That's okay. Thank you, Mr. Burks.
Case number nineteen, Mark and Janine Reiniker, twenty-nine Hamlet Drive, Mount Sinai. Properties located on the west side of Hamlet Drive, eleven hundred and eight feet north of Hamlet Drive, Mount Sinai. Applicant requests rear yard variance for proposed in-ground swimming pool.
Mr. Mazzarella, I have Diane Laspisa, Diana Laspisa, for the applicant.
I don't see her yet, Anthony.
Yeah, I just promoted her. She's coming up.
I'm here.
Yeah.
Oh, Howard.
Good afternoon, Miss Laspisa. Can I just have your appearance for the record? You've been previously sworn.
Diana Laspisa with Moreno Expediting Services, twenty-nine thirty-eight Hempstead Turnpike, Levittown, New York, one-one-seven-five-six. Here on behalf of the property owners, Mark and Janine Reiniker. And we're requesting permission from the board to install an in-ground swimming pool in the rear of the property, holding a rear yard setback of seven feet and a side yard setback of twelve feet. This is within the community called the Hamlet, where the rear yards are very tight, and there's, it's impossible to be able to install in-ground pools within these communities without coming before the board. This property does back up to the actual golf course. Um, the proposed pool will be seven feet off the house, where. The requirement is ten feet. Anything closer than ten feet does require an engineer certification, which we will have to obtain. This is common in, within the development, rear yard setback variances. Um, I know of one that was, uh, granted January sixteenth of two thousand and eight, case number sixteen, was for a five-foot side and seven-foot rear. Um, and I don't know if the board has any questions.
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh.
Go ahead, Harry.
I guess it's my turn still, right? Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, so this property, this building lot backs up to the golf course, so there's no residential property. To the, I guess that would be to the west of the, of the pool. Is that correct? And I'm, we're looking at the survey, and it's nothing but a big, open golf course.
Correct. I do have photos as well. If you wanted, I could share screen, but it does.
No, actually, I'm familiar with that location. I've lost many balls in that, right at that, uh, towards that house.
Oh, okay. And you have approval from the homeowners association as well?
Okay, um. And, uh, I noticed that there is a twelve, twelve-foot side yard, and I know that we've granted, uh, applications for that type of variance, uh, in similar situations. So I really have no further questions. Do any of the board members have any, uh, questions? Anything, Anthony? Any comments? And anybody on, online want to?
Mr. Burks, I don't have any.
I don't have any comments, but Diana, um, do you have, did you submit that approval from the homeowners association with your application?
I didn't, because we didn't have it at that time, and I didn't know that it was necessarily required for you guys. I know I'll have to provide it to building, but I can.
Could you just email it to me so I can make a part of the file? Okay, thanks.
Okay, so if there's nothing else, I, I'll make a motion to approve the application as submitted, type two.
Second.
Motion is to grant the application submitted as presented, type two, by Mr. Burks, and seconded by Mr. Wisdom. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mrs.
Thank you.
Okay, case number twenty, under the name of Cantalino. I'm gonna call at the end of the hearing. Um, so we're gonna move on to case number twenty-three. It's sixty-three Westbury LLC, care of Tracy's permits. Properties located on the east side of Westbury Drive, one hundred and sixty-nine feet north of Rocky Point Road, Sound Beach. Applicant requests front yard setback variance for existing one-story residence addition and minimum side yard variance for second existing one-story residence addition.
Mr. Mazzarella, I have Tracy Rivera for the applicant. Ms. Rivera, can you just have your appearance for the record?
Sure. Tracy Rivera, agent for the applicant, eighty Terry Street, Patchogue, New York.
Thank you. Just, uh, just to let you know, Mr. Azrael, we do have two speakers on this case.
Hey, Tracy.
Hi. Sorry about that. You guys caught me off guard. I was actually doing work, not realizing that we'd be skipping three other applications. All right, so Tracy Rivera, agent of the applicant. This property has a lot of history, so I just wanna go over it a little bit. Um, the property managers or, um, people that, I guess, were in charge of sixty-three Westbury LLC had started this application back in two thousand and fifteen, where there was a law violation. It was law violation fifteen zero six zero two eight four nine, which is, uh, I believe to have been already resolved. There may be, uh, the conditions that had not been met due to how long this whole process has taken place. So I just wanna give you a little history on it. There was a rental permit that was applied for, with the original, um, property managers, which was fifteen H R zero one two nine three three. There has also been a letter of correction, um, that was submitted to go over the dimensions on the property, and that's letter correction, L O C, zero zero seven three five zero. There's a highway permit that had been issued for the second, um, curb cut, and that is under permit number two zero seven nine six five four. We had a, um, existing demolition done on this, uh, for the, for the pool. It was underneath one of the other permit numbers, so the pool is no longer there. There's an expired permit on the property, which is there with me, um. Where are we on this one? Oh, I'm sorry. Anyway, so the expired permit's part of this application. We also had a state variance that went before the board for, um, New York State for, um, a, a ceiling height requirement in the finished basement, and that was position number two zero one eight. So that was back in two thousand and eighteen, dash zero two five one. What else do we have here? Oh, and that permit number that we, I spoke of was permit number B one three four three seven four. With that being said, the property is located at sixty-three Westbury in, um, Sound Beach. The parcel is a hundred and twenty feet wide, a hundred feet deep. Upon, um, taking over the, the parcel to legalize this and bring this into good formance, which was probably around the two thousand and eighteen, nineteen timeframe is when I actually got involved. And then there was, you know, uh, no noise on the other end, or they would take a while to get back in touch with me, and then we had COVID come in. So here we are before you today. What's going on now is we look to renew that permit, and while we're looking to renew that permit, the building department had taken note that there was a one-story addition that is on, um, the side of the parcel that you can see that was highlighted, that was seven point eight by twelve point six. Um, it's keeping, it needs to have a twenty-foot side yard where it's sixteen. There's also a little tiny bump out in the front of the house that's a three point five by seven point four, one-story addition. We're supposed to keep a forty-foot front yard, and we're at twenty-one. I have a survey that is part of the town's records that's showing, I believe, nineteen, oh, my eyes are blurry. Bear with me. I think, uh, nineteen eighty-seven, that shows this addition and this little bump out as the house is. We're looking to legalize, uh, obtain approvals from this board so we can move forward with obtaining the building permits that are needed to continue the process, to get the COs to continue the process, to either get the house rental or void out the house rental. Last correspondence I had with the current property, uh, managers over there was when they were unsure whether or not the house was still gonna be rented out. Um, I know there's a long history here. I know, I know there may have been some issues with some of the neighbors. Obviously, we have two speakers today, because there was violations back and forth in court. The only thing that I can reassure the board with today is, in the event, since it's taken so long for this process to be completed, that in the event that, uh, I am no longer representing this property, uh, owners, I would be more than glad to inform the law department and inform, you know, this on Board of Appeals that, uh, you know, there's stagnant movement on this and that nothing is moving forward. At this current time, the property, uh, managers slash owners have made it quite clear that they just need to finish up this process, because they're not really sure what the future is for this property, whether or not they wanted to put it up for sale, whether or not they're gonna continue with the rental permit, or if we're gonna void it out. All they know is that the parcel has to be made legal. Hence, I gave you the background of everything that's going on. At this time, I'll, oh, and then obviously, we're in the Sound Beach, Rocky Point area. This is actually a large parcel for that area, being a hundred and twenty feet wide. It's a lot of parcels, as you can see across the street, that are like maybe sixty feet wide, seventy foot wide. This is a large parcel. Um, the additions that were, have been on the property since I stated the eighties are more than conforming to any house in the neighborhood. And I'll address any questions at this time.
Thank you, Tracy. So, um, I understand the history on the additions. So, uh, you're saying both additions existed in nineteen eighty-seven, as far as you can tell?
Yes, if you look in, if you look in the town portal and pull up maybe an original, uh, survey, you'll see something that's in there that's really old, that's, I, I believe eighty-seven. I'm like, Danny might need stronger glasses, but I'm believing the date is eighty-seven. It's a really old survey. And those additions are clearly there.
Okay, talk to me a little bit about the violations. What type of violations were in existence?
Um, just like, just like a lot of violations that we hear go before this board, when there's a house rental, and maybe the people that aren't renting it may not be exactly the, I'm thinking, the needest of, uh, neighbors, um, maybe, you know, I, I don't think there were always maybe, you know what? I'd be guessing. But usually, if you have a rental property and it's going before the board, and there's people, neighbors that show up, they show up because they're not happy with the tenants that are there, and I got news to you, I don't blame them, because if I had neighbors in my air, on my block that were not taking care of their property, I'd be showing up at hearings as well. I can just assure you that we've done every step possible to move forward with this. Obviously, that state variance was granted in two thousand and eighteen, and then they start, you know, started moving forward. So my guess, and it's only going by my guess, and from the experience being in the business as long, is that if there's a house rental and you're going to, um, go before the board to legalize something, and neighbors show up, it's gotta be probably because how the property's kept, or maybe there's problems with the tenants. So I'm sure once we speak to the neighbors, we'll find out exactly what's going on.
All right, great. Uh, so that's a great segue, because I really don't have any other questions. I mean, uh,
Okay.
what you're seeking the variance for is, is, you know, pretty simple here, and the fact that um, those additions have been long in existence. Um, I'm really, really eager to fi- find out what maybe some of the other problems or issues with the property are that are affecting the surrounding residents, really.
Ab- absolutely. When the letter of corrections that I, I mentioned, the L O C numbers, again, bear with me, the glasses, uh, zero zero seven three three zero and zero zero seven three five zero, I had submitted thinking that those additions were maybe part of the original dwelling, so I tried to do a letter of correction, and each one of those additions had to be on its own letter of correction. And that's when it, you know, came back. Uh, I got an answer coming back that we needed to go before the board, and that's why we're here.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. Um, all right, Anthony, I mean, uh, I'd like to bring the speakers up if we can.
Okay. I have, uh, Ryan Matera, and I will get the name of the person. They only identify themselves as Q, which is the block over. So, uh.
Sorry, Mr. Vega. My name is Andy Corey. I live on Q.
Andy Corey? Hold on one second. Let me change.
Last name is spelled K H O U R Y.
K H.
O U R Y.
Okay. Can I just have, Mr. Matera, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, and Andy, you can hear me. Can I just have you have, give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn in?
Good evening. You saw this where I tell the truth, the whole truth, come back true. Just put your hands.
I do.
You Matera?
Yep.
Great guy. Got you both. Thank you.
All right, so who would like to start off? Andy, Ryan?
I think I'm mostly here for clarification on the letter. I was, uh.
All right, Mr. Corey, just one second. Can I just get your name and address for the record?
Andy Corey. My address is sixty-six zero, and the street is Q Drive in Sound Beach.
Okay.
Um, so I guess we're here today to discuss things that are already in existence. I just wanted to make sure that there weren't more uh, additions being proposed in the home, because, uh, you know, like the, uh, representative speculated, that there have been issues with the tenants on this street with people around here, and we just didn't want more tenants in, uh, coming into this area. We're also under the impression that this is a, a business being ran in a residential area. So this is why we're kind of being hesitant about having noise pollution and, and just, uh, overpopulation in general here.
Sir, when you mentioned, uh, business running a residential area, could you give more detail on that?
Well, it says here, Westbury LLC. I'm under the impression that that means, uh, somebody who's running this as a profit for rental purposes or?
Okay, no, I understand that. It's a, it's a property on property. I just didn't know if, uh, what you were saying, it was activities at the home.
No, I can't speculate on anything like that, no.
It's a shelter.
Is, um, is there anything further that you wanna add?
Well, like Ryan said, we pretty much have come to the assumption that it's transient housing. Uh, we just didn't want any more of that in our neighborhood. We got a nice community here. So.
Mr. Matera, can I just get your name and address for the record?
Yeah, Ryan Matera, sixty-seven Westberry Drive, Sound Beach, New York, one one seven eight nine.
Thank you.
All right, so, so, Corey, if you are, if you're finished, well, the list is for Mr. Matera at this point.
I don't think I have much else to say unless you guys have any questions for me.
Okay, well, you can hang in there in case any other board members have questions, but I do appreciate you showing up. Coming down to, uh, I'll give you some information.
Well, thank you for having us as part of the process.
Okay, Mr. Matera, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Matera, did you say anything? Did you have anything to add?
No, I just was saying thank you for having us as part of the process here.
No, Mr. Matera, did you say, did you add anything?
No, I wasn't sure what was, uh, I wasn't sure what was going on with this whole process. I didn't get a letter. I was notified, so notified by a neighbor. I just wanted to make sure there weren't building additional structures on the property or increase in the size of that one. Because, you know, I didn't want more and more people coming into the neighborhood. But if you're clearing it up to sell it, uh, I don't get a problem with that.
Mr. Matera, where, where is your property located?
I'm right, um, I'm number sixty-seven. I'm right next to it.
Corey, I'm sorry, where, where is your property?
He's sixty-Q, which is behind Mr. Matera.
Okay, all right, yep, I see that. Uh, Mr. Corey, you're on, you're on, uh, mute, so we can't hear you.
I apologize. Yeah, I share, uh, my back fence is up against Mr. Matera's and the property in question.
I see that now. Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Matera, did you have anything to add as far as, um, the conditions of the property or the activities that are?
Yes, I submitted a, uh, a letter.
Yeah, I have a letter from Mr. Matera, um, that's made part of the record. Um, I, do you need me to read it into the record for you, Mr. Matera, or you wanna?
You could read it or just submit it into the record.
Okay, are you gonna tell the board what's in the letter?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead.
Oh, you want me to, oh, um. I forgot whatever.
Do you want me to read it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Okay, I was, I was not notified. I did not receive any correspondence regarding this application. Um, and just for the record, I did look through the return receipts, uh, the post office receipts. I don't see one for you, Mr. Matera, that it was sent to you. Due to COVID nineteen, I don't leave the house. I would not have seen the yard sign, which was put up only yesterday.
Got you.
Um, I was notified about this by another concerned neighbor. The property is a business owned and operated for profit in a residential neighborhood. This business is seeking the variance to increase and maximize profits, which is not appropriate for this small residential neighborhood. This particular business is a shelter that I believe already exceeds the maximum number of families allowed to reside. From what I can see on the variance request, the business wants to expand the footprint and add another building. Either of these would encroach on my property and have a further negative effect on my property value and quality of life. Most significantly, the police are often called to the property. I don't know the reasons for these calls, but as the next door neighbor, I have witnessed drug use in front of my house. The occupants will walk off the business property and engage in illegal activities right in my driveway. If the business is expanded, I fear this illegal activity will increase. Due to the fact that I was not notified about this variance, I was not afforded the time to gather any evidence or even fully collect my thoughts regarding this issue. I strongly oppose the variance that this business is seeking and request that it is denied.
Thank you, Laurie.
You're welcome.
So, Mr. Matera, I just, um, I just wanna clear something up for you. I appreciate, um, you giving us your observations in, in writing. Uh, but I just wanna be fair to the applicant as well. And, um, Anthony, if we could just bring the survey back up for a second. So I know, of course, uh, to any of the neighbors expanding on something that's already a detriment would be a major concern, of course. Uh, but the applicant is here merely to legalize or, or have correct, um, get a variance for, um, additions to this structure, uh, that have been in existence um, since nineteen eighty-seven or before. So if you would, um, take a look at the survey in front of you, the areas that are highlighted, are the, are the additions. If you look at the little bump outs on the, on the, on the structure um, that are highlighted, that's why they're here. They're here to get the variances for that. Not that that's gonna change your mind about what's, what the history has been as far as a property and the occup.
No objection for them legalizing. I would, I don't know anything about variances or setbacks. I saw the letter two days ago that was, and I assumed that that's what they were doing. So I assumed they were gonna expand.
Yes.
If they're not going to, that's perfectly fine, I'm sure.
I'm trying to cross to you as, as concerned, of course, as we are for the quality of life revs, residents. Um, I just want to be, uh, clear with you as to why we are here as a board. Our job, if you, um, look at, um, setbacks and the like. And so, uh, you know, while we are concerned, of course, with, uh, behavior and or conditions of property um, for the quality of life residents, but our primary, um, duties here are to, um, in this particular case, for those two, those two bump outs to grant, uh, an applicant, you know, granted approval for those, for those two bump outs. Now, we are told, uh, by the applicant or the representative of that, um, they are trying to, um, get these variances so that they can continue in legalizing, um, the structure itself so that they can get then, um, from what I understand, either legalize their permit um, to rent, to have a rental permit and/or sell the property. So I, I just wanna be clear with you. If we were to deny that, we're really not, um, attaining the goal that I think you and your neighbors are looking for, which are really just to have the place be cleaned up and to have that type of, um, um, behavior and or conditions be cleared up, uh, for the quality of life, the people around it.
I agree.
And, um, so what I'd like to do is, is ask, um, the representative, maybe if she has any further commentary. And um so, what I'd like to do is is ask um the representative, maybe if she has any further commentary. Uh, what I think you and your neighbors want to hear is what this applicant is going to do going forward uh to try and satisfy um. Well, I guess Tracy, I'll, I'll-
Okay, great, thank you. So first off, I just want to address the fact that if you look at the date on those registered return receipts that went out, I think I sent them December thirtieth. I definitely allotted them enough time as per as per what the the town code says and um it even has the date on there. As for the signs, I know that the signs went up not this past Sunday, the Sunday prior, because it was raining out, it was wet and I physically put the signs up. So I spent my entire Sunday evening in front of the fireplace trying to thaw out from being out in the rain and cold. So I know the signs were put up at an appropriate time. As for as for legalizing the structures, you know, I I appreciate the fact that the the neighbors came out because the only way that the town can um move forward with making sure properties are in compliance and keeping everyone happy is if the neighbors actually participate and tell us what's going on. But it's it's beneficial for the neighbors to move forward with the application being processed, the COs being obtained and getting or and and continuing with the rental permit if they don't sell. Because if they don't, if they don't get the COs, they're not really gonna be able to sell because the banks are gonna give them a hard time and we're gonna still continue with this process. And if they are gonna maintain it to go move forward with the rental permit, rental permit's only good for a certain period of time and then they have to be renewed. So if the neighbors are not happy with the rental permit or the tenants that are there, all they have to do is make a phone call, call code enforcement, call viol-, you know, the law department violations division. And it'll flag the property and then they will not be able to renew their rental permit without getting inspections. There is no business being run at this property. I did have the opportunity a couple of years ago to actually walk through and all it is is it's a rental house. There's no, there's no other businesses being run there whatsoever. I, you know, firsthand walked through the entire property. When a property is listed in a a corporation, an LLC and whatnot, that doesn't mean that they're actually running a business out of there. Some people just do it either because it's a rental property or they're doing it just to be able to cover, you know, cover themselves legally. So um, once again, we're just looking to legalize things that have been here uh clearly since around eighty seven with that survey that's on file at the town. Once the board looks favorable upon the application, which we are hoping they do, then we'll move forward obtaining the building permits. I can just submit the grant letter over to the building division. They'll issue the building permits. Once they issue the building permits, we get our COs and then we move forward with either the property being sold or moving forward with the rental permit where the town will have to be able to come in and inspect, I believe, every fifteen to eighteen months. So with that, you know, I don't, you know, everything we're looking to do is more than conforming in the area and once again, I want to thank the neighbors for coming out and um letting us know what's really going on over there. I appreciate it.
Thanks.
I have, I have letters, uh other letters uh to read as well. You want me to do that now?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I have a letter from Jeffrey Black. Um, this is an opposition. The certified letter was not signed for by me or an agent of mine. Um, it came to me on January fifth with the green card missing. Uh, the receipt of the above letter was on January fifth, limiting my ability to respond appropriately appropriately as I was only afforded one week to respond. Uh, when speaking with neighbors, it was learned that those directly impacted by the above property did not receive letter notifications as required. The property is owned by a corporation and has operated as a business leasing space to the state for transient housing in a residentially zoned property. The petition calls for an addition to a one-story residence when in fact it is a two-story structure with basement living space. The petition is unclear and inaccurate in asking for a second existing one-story residence addition as there is no existing second structure. Any addition to the existing two-story structure would not be to the home sizing of the community and make the structure able to house more people and operate as a large business in a residential community. The facility has been a drain on the taxpayers and resources of this resident residential community as numerous EMS, fire, police responses have occurred inclusive of drug investigations conduct conducted by the Suffolk County Police Department. Furthermore, the multiple families added to the drain on the limited school resources of our community. Garbage collection is made by town contract, not by private vendors. The property owner is not noted on the application. The property has not been utilized in the fashion of the other residential homes and is disruptive to the community with screaming, yelling, cursing, children poorly supervised and running into the street. Any variances to this commercially used property with continued use in the manner it has been used is detrimental to this one point five square mile residential community. Please deny the above noted variance. And then I have an email from Margaret McConic. I am opposed to having a second two-story, two-story structure on the property. There is already a two-story transient home existing at this location. The property is owned by a corporation and is operating as a business in a private residential area. There have been many concurrences where police and fire have had to come out due to drug and domestic injuries. There are usually more than one family living in these quarters. They have been known to fight on any given day. Children are usually running wild outside with no parental supervision, in some cases in the rain or freezing weather. Sometimes starting as near as early as seven AM for many hours. I cannot in good conscience support this application. Many neighbors feel the same. That's all I have.
Alright, thanks Lori. So it it, you know, it's evident uh by at least certainly the second communication um that there is some confusion as to to what this um hearing is, you know, and and it sounds as though neighbors are in belief of that there is some um plan put forth to either expand the current structure or to add another structure on the property, um which um if if that was the case, I could completely understand why people would be in an alarmist state, certainly considering the the history of what's going on here. Um, so um, uh, you know, i- i- it's kind of tough uh unless, and and again, the two members that of the neighborhood that are here, uh, you know, I hope have a better understanding as to what the function of of this hearing and this board is at this point. Uh, but unfortunately, your neighbors may not um understand that if uh, unless they're listening in. Uh, but you know, I'd I'd like to just um ask if there's any questions from from any any further questions from some other board members at this time.
Hey Jimmy, I have a question.
Okay, Rick.
Um, Tracy, the the uh, I I might have missed it and you might have covered it. The seven foot eight by twelve foot six uh addition that's on the um, I guess the southerly side of the property, the sixteen foot to the side yard. What does that use dance?
Part of living space on the house. I don't know. I I couldn't tell you. I know it's living space. I'm not really sure what it's used for. I don't have the plan. I don't have the plans in front of me, so I'm not really sure. I know it's living space. I know it's one story and I know it's been there since nineteen, like nineteen eighty seven on the survey.
Okay, I was just wondering because the driveway curves into it. So I was just thinking maybe even it was just a garage. So that's why I was-
Well, that's why we, that's why, I'm sorry to interrupt. That's why we originally filed the letter of correction because I thought maybe it was a garage at one time and they had converted it over and then we, it just would have been a permit, but after having an inspection done by Bill Shot, he looked at the foundation and felt, looked at the inside basement foundation and felt that that had been an addition added on and that's why we're before the board. I also just wanted to make reference, Rick, like being in, you know, being you know, in this business, doing what I do for like over twenty-five years now at this point, that, you know, the letters went out in time, like even though you guys, you know, the Board of Appeals has the proof in front of them with the stamped date. I don't want the neighbors thinking that, you know, I slipped these letters out at the last minute and they weren't notified in time. I mean, I just received a Christmas package in the mail that was sent out December seventeenth today. So the mail is really, you know, really kind of messed up and on all of the letters that I send out to all neighbors, I always put my name and phone number on there in case anyone has any questions because I really strongly believe that people need to be good neighbors. Unfortunately, I can't control if it, you know, it's a rental property and it's not being run as 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 good as it should be, but it's in everyone's best interest if they do not sell it to have a rental permit on it because if there's a rental permit on it, then it it gives them more power to be able to pull the rental permit and get the town in there to inspect.
Well, that 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 was the point I was gonna get at and I appreciate you clarifying the letter situation. Um, and that is that no matter what, before a uh rental permit is issued, it will be inspected by a town inspector and if there is any issue with the living conditions and or two and more families living there, the inspector will catch it and we might be back here again.
Absolutely. I can tell you right now, when I was in there, which was like two years ago, there was only one kitchen. So, uh, you know, if there was somebody trying to do something that was, you know, unethical, I would not be here representing them because you know, just like everyone else that's in business, my name is everything and I really truly believe that people need to be good neighbors. So, uh, you know, I appreciate everyone coming out, but all we're really here for today is to legalize these two additions so either they can sell the house or they can move forward making it a hundred percent legal and as I said in the beginning of the application, in the event that, you know, the property owners go MIA and they don't continue the process with me, I will notify the law department and I will notify the Board of Appeals so this way you can go out to the property immediately.
Alright, no further questions, Jimmy. Thanks.
Yeah.
Tracy, just to clarify
Oh, yeah.
for the record, I've written the complaints. The complaints were disposed of. Uh, but there was a flag for the various things you brought up, including the highway bond, the pool. Um, and just to clarify, there's the basement was compared to have space and they're trying, and they are applying to the building department as part of their application to-
That was what the, yes, that's what that state variance was that I rattled off the number, the petition number. That's what kind of held up the, besides the fact that the property owners- Yeah, ceiling height, there was a, there wasn't even a ceiling height. I think it was just one beam that was a little too low to kick this over to the state. And as you know, state applications, sometimes, you know, they can take forever.
Correct. I know, we we've seen that before. We've had a couple of applications where it's like three or four years before they finally came back for us.
Exactly, so you, so you got it.
And just to clarify, uh, it it's haveable space, but it just continues the rest of the house. It's not uh partitioned or divided.
No, not at all. Like I said, when I was in there two years ago, I was, I was in there when the drafter went in there to draft up the plans and it was all free flowing. There was nothing. I don't, I don't bring any applications that are that are unethical because I'm not gonna put my name on something like that.
Of course not. I, I just wanted to clarify for the record.
Absolutely.
But the basement's not before us, basement's part of the greater application at the building department. And the entire interior of this house is going to be inspected. We have two additions that need to be inspected as well as the basement for itself. And it uh, they're only coming to convert the basement to habitable space at this point. There's no attempt to convert it into a separate dwelling unit.
Nope.
Okay, so just, I know that a couple both of the residences who came as well as uh the written application is to clarify what we're doing here, but also uh what will still happen at the building department before any CO could possibly grant it.
Well, it couldn't be a mul-, yeah, what what the neighbors need to know is it couldn't be a mul-, it couldn't be a multiple residence anyway. The only way that you can have a second kitchen in a home in the town of Brookhaven if this is owner occupied accessory apartment. So-
That's another hearing too.
Exactly. And if you live in a house, your house is not gonna be in a corporation. So if you, there's no way that this, there's an accessory apartment going in this house.
They would need a, they would need an application and and it has to be owned by an individual.
Exactly. It's not even deed it, it's not even deed it correctly to have that. Exactly.
Matarra, do you have a question?
Yeah, um, I'm not, I'm not, the house is not, the house next door to me is a shelter. Run by Halo House. I don't know if everyone's on the same page here. I don't know even how Tracy knows that this is a, it's a shelter.
Well, that, I just know that it was a rental property. I don't know any, I don't know anything else.
Like six or seven families in there all at once.
I think it's definitely relevant to to see how many people are living in that house.
They're gonna be inspected by the building department. They're gonna have to go inside before they do anything.
Overnight.
Okay.
The owner of this property or the owner of the LLC is not the best, really the best person in the world.
They can- I just want to clarify, uh, I I can go, just to clarify. The only thing for the board is the exact listing additions, but even then, that just gives them permission to go back to the building department to finish the permit process, which still requires a full interior inspection. And if they deviate, even deviate, even they do everything they're supposed to, but they have other things they don't, they they're not allowed to have, they can't have their seal and and that shuts them right down. Uh, the board here is, only has the additions in front of them. They don't really have anything else, probably going out to the application. But there is, there is inspection would be required before any final approval began and that's the reality of things. If they have things there that are not permitted under the code, regardless of what they do in terms of what they're asking for, they still won't get their seal. Uh, because that also happens, the town will shut down, will knock right your seal if we find other violations of the code that aren't even documented now. So there's another interior inspection this house for a seal.
If it, if it gets to the point that they do go for a rental permit, then they have a whole nother list of inspections that have to be done. So I mean, they're looking at several inspections before anything can even be finalized.
But it's not stopping you from being rented now. It's illegally being rented now, correct?
Well, actually, yeah, so is there rental permit on this right now? Alright, and then, okay, um.
Mr. Doyle.
Do they have a rental permit now? It is owned by an LLC, so.
There, there was a rental permit. I rattled off the number in the beginning of the application. There was a rental permit that had been applied for and that's when they came up with the, all these issues on the property. Because that's what normally happens.
It seems like the rental permit has been expired.
Okay, so, so when anyone, just so everyone knows, or the the property owners, surrounding property owners now, is when, even if you went and bought a a a rental property as an investment property and you think that you're gonna go get a rental permit, you start the rental permit process and if there's any issues on the property, you get flagged and you can't continue. So the person or the the property managers that had run this in the very beginning had went, moved forward with obtaining a rental permit and then they were flagged across the board all over the place between being in court, state variances, building variances, letters of corrections, highway permits, everything I rattled off in the beginning. So that's what's gone on.
Excuse me, can I ask a question? Tracy? Tracy?
Yes.
Are you there?
Yes. I'm here.
Uh, so we don't really know whether this is a rental property or some sort of licensed group home or-
I don't know that, Howie.
Well, I think in all fairness, we should know that.
Absolutely, but once again, we're before the board for two additions that have been there.
I understand.
So, you know, I mean, I don't think legalizing or hold, not moving forward with a grant on two uh, you know, additions that have been there clearly since eighty seven as per town records should hold up the process, but I do not disagree with you that the board should know that and maybe even possibly have an inspection. I don't have an issue with that.
Well, good.
And we're on the same page.
John and or Lori, is uh, that's something that uh, you know, we could, we could request is a, is an inspection at this point?
Yeah, absolutely.
Now, you 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 could do that at this point. You know, there there would be an inspection in other states. The board does have the ability to condition a approval in from them to be inspected, inspection first. It, they certainly have the ability to do that and they can hold this over for inspection if they choose to.
Yeah, we hold this to um February tenth and Tracy gives us her-
One concern, sorry, is I've had other applications that were waiting on inspections and I, I can just tell you, two sixty-six Pecanic Avenue, I finally got their inspection. I don't want this to be another six month holdover because we can't get this. So I mean, if, is there a way that we could schedule an inspection with the law department so I don't have to go through the building department to make it easier because I I have applications with what's going on to take forever.
We can, we can arrange, I can get somebody from the law department to uh-
I would really appreciate that.
John, you will set that up. Uh, if we hold it to February tenth, you're gonna set up the inspection?
Tracy, reach out to me and uh, I will coordinate you with uh Inspector Deegan and one of those people. Also, Tracy,
Yes.
Uh, you said there's a pending rental application. You just gave the documentation to us that you're you're basically waiting on this process to do your rental permit?
Yes, we're just waiting for the house to be legal. If you're going to rent it, there's, there's, hold on, there's been, there's been communications that they're, they may possibly put the house up for sale. So if the house gets legal and they put it up for sale, then obviously we're gonna avoid the rental because someone else is gonna purchase the house and you can't have it on time.
Right now, pending, correct?
Yes, yes, I'm right. You want me to get you the-
The board like to see that, just know that you actually have one pending to-
Yes, if you look at the denial on the actual denial, as part of this record is the HR number. It's in the system.
Okay.
And I made it part of the, I made it part of the record.
Let's try not to continue this anymore. We we have, uh, do we have a motion on this, Mr. Mazero?
We have a motion to close and hold. Lori, what's the date?
Second.
February tenth.
Thank you.
The motion is to adjourn to two ten pending an app, pending an inspection from the law department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Can I just remind the board that the stenographer is gonna have a very hard time getting that transcript because everybody's talking over each other? Um, just to remind you about that. Okay. Okay, I'm gonna recall case number twenty uh on page ten, board members, Magdalena Cantalino, forty-four Shaber Road, Rocky Point, uh, Shaber Road, Patchogue, property is located on the south side of Shaber Road, seventy feet east of Clinton Avenue, Patchogue. Applicant requests rear and side yard variances for proposed in-ground- Seventy feet east of Clinton Avenue, Patchogue. Applicant requests rear and side yard variances for proposed in-ground swimming pool.
Mr. Wisdom, I have, uh, let the record reflect that Mr. Cunha accuses. Um, Mr. Wisdom, I have Diane Moshe for the applicant. Ms. Moshe, can we just have your appearance for the record?
Yes, of course. Diane Moshe, D and I, Antedating Services, offices located at seven seven nine West Black Garden Farming though. On before the board today seeking permission to construct an in-ground swimming pool located on Shaber Road in Patchogue. We're seeking a variance for rear yard setback of ten feet and a side yard setback of ten feet. Um, the property is, uh, fifty-three feet wide and is approximately a hundred and forty-two feet in depth. Uh, again, I'll reiterate, um, due to COVID, we have a lot of families that are trying to, um, make their homes, especially during the warmer months, entertaining for their families. Uh, having been, uh, on lockdown and unable to, um, go out or, um, attend functions outside, uh, there's been an abundance of proposed swimming pools. Um, in this case, they're trying to maintain enough, uh, yard space to still have some yard to be able to be used. Um, if need be, uh, we do have enough width on the property in the way that the pool is proposed to increase the side yard that we're requesting ten feet on. Um, a little bit, um, and the rear yard, we're requesting to maintain that, uh, especially to maintain some yard space. Because it is a smaller sized lot. Um, if the board has any questions, I'd be happy to address them at this time.
I am.
Yep.
I, I see that it's holding ten foot on the side and ten foot in the rear, nine feet on the other side of the pool. Um, I'm not looking at an aerial or anything, but is this common in the neighborhood?
Yeah, this is, um, this is part of the Cannon Lake, um, area. Um, and, uh, well, it's on Homeland Park, but, um, Shaber Road is, is not far from, uh, the Cannon Lake area. There's a lot of fifty-foot lots. Uh, there's the aerial, you have lot fifty-one that has a pool that looks like it's right on the property line. These were a lot of smaller bungalows that had been added to through the years, so most of these homes in the area, if their structures are legalized, they've had variances for setbacks.
So this is, this conforms to the neighborhood?
Yeah, I would say that it does. I, I would say that.
There are pools that I do see what looks like it could be, um, above ground, some below ground, you know.
Right, there's a lot of above ground pools. There are some in the ground pools. I think that, you know, as time goes on, people are, are moving towards the in-ground pools. The above ground pools don't, you know, last quite as long and they're, you know, if they're going to be stuck home, then they want to enjoy their yard.
So you say, you, you, you're okay with the conformity of the, uh, neighborhood?
Yeah, absolutely. We have a smaller, smaller area. There's a lot of, um, accessory structures that have, are close to the property lines. And we are offering ten feet with the variance request. The relief is minimal. It's, it's not, you know, it's not a tremendous request of relief.
I have nothing further.
Mr. Wisdom, I don't have any speakers on this case.
All right, so I'll make a motion. Uh, I will make a motion to grant the application type two.
Second.
Ms. Moshe?
Yes.
Oh, I thought you were saying something.
No, I said thank you.
Motion is to grant the application as presented type two with a second from Mr. Lindsay. All in favor?
Aye.
What, any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Moshe.
Have a great evening, everyone.
Thank you, you too.
Bye-bye.
Case number twenty-four, PDQ Equities, care of Peter Calucci, fifty Middle Island, Yap Hank Road, Middle Island. Located on the west side of Ruland Road, three hundred and seventy-seven feet north of Lancer Road, Selden. Applicant requests rear yard variance for existing one-story residence addition.
Do you have the applicant, Anthony?
Mr. Lindsay, I have, uh.
It's Rick Cunha, actually.
Sorry, Mr. Cunha, I have, um, Anthony Matola for the applicant. Anthony, can you just keep your attention to the board attorney, uh, to be sworn in?
Tom, I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, I'm about the truth.
You're muted, Mr. Matola.
Sorry about that. I do.
Uh, can we just have your appearance for the record, Anthony?
Anthony Matola, P O Box five sixty-seven, Rocky Point, New York. Uh, good evening, board members, Mr. Chairman. Um, for the record, I just want to say that, uh, my client, Peter Calucci, um, is in contract of selling this. Um, pending, you know, everything that goes on with the hearing tonight. He's obviously responsible for the permits. Um, this is a ten-six by eleven-one addition, a hundred and seventeen square feet. Um, the whole block is definitely the same square footage house. Um, definitely fits in the character and nature of the, the area. Um, we're at forty-one point four feet rear yard. All it is is an extension off the kitchen. It's like a little breakfast nook. Um, and as you can see from the aerial, I mean, every single lot is the same, all the houses are the same. And there's a lot of different little bump outs as just like the subject property. So any questions or comments from the board?
Hey, Anthony, it's Rick Cunha. How are you?
Hey, how are you?
Good, thank you. Okay, so first, the first question I have is, is the extension is, uh, ten-six by eleven-one on this survey. Is that correct?
Yes, hundred and seventeen square feet.
Okay, and so we're definitely not over on the square footage, I can see. Uh, so it's basically just the rear yard. The house holds what, fifty-two and a half and this is holding a forty-one and a point four?
Forty-one point four, yeah, correct.
Okay, and so you're here basically for rear yard. Uh, how is this being used?
Um, it's a little bump out, e- extension off the kitchen. It's a little breakfast nook.
Okay, and that, that explains the paver pad to the side yard, almost like an area where they can walk out for breakfast.
Yeah, I have the photos up on the screen, Rick.
Oh, there we go. Okay, thank you. Um, I, I, I'm sorry about that, Lori, because you only pop up when you actually speak. It comes back up on the screen.
All right.
Um, Anthony, the only other question I have is, is you stated that he's setting it, setting it up for sale? Is that correct?
It's in contract already, yes. They have a closing date, um, pending the variance. Um, they'll have a closing date and then they'll hold money in escrow, um, for the rest of the permits and COs.
So we're not extended, now this had a rental permit at one time?
Not that I'm aware of. My client just bought this like six months ago, eight months ago.
Okay, so he's basically flipping the house.
Well, yeah, all my, uh, preliminary research, I didn't come across any old rental permits or anything.
Okay, because I have something here that shows, uh, shows an existing violation. Is that correct? Uh, VO five one two four one?
I am not familiar with that, no. Nor when I did the denial, usually the building department will always, you know, bring that up. Um, nothing got brought to my attention, but I can look further into that as I go through with the permit process.
We have the violation in the system, but it is, the violation is for the rear extension. Um, so this application is going to clear up this violation.
Okay, and, uh, obviously if it's for sale, there's no need for a rental permit in any way, shape or form. Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, uh, no further questions. Uh, any board members have any questions? I guess hearing none, I'll make a motion to grant the application as presented type two. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks a lot. Have a good night.
Case number twenty-five, Michael and Janet Hogan, care of Andrew Malguanera. Property is located on the east side of Ontario Street, three hundred and twenty-five feet, south of Dillon Avenue, Port Jefferson Station. Applicant requests rear yard variances for existing one-story residence addition, a sunroom and existing garage addition.
Mr. Lindsay, I have Amy DeVito for the applicant. Ms. DeVito, can I just have your appearance for the record?
Hi, Amy DeVito, ten thirty-one Main Street, Port Jefferson, New York, one one seven seven seven. On behalf of Andrew Malguanera for the applicant. Hi, Mr. Lindsay.
Hi, how are you?
Good, and, and, uh, members of the board. Uh, so we're here today to legalize a one-story sunroom that's in the rear of the house. Um, it's, I don't know the exact year it was built, but it, it appears in the two thousand and one aerial, so it's existed for at least the past twenty years, if not more. Um, it is just a typical sunroom. We submitted some photos so that you guys could see what it looks like. It's really for seasonal use only. There's no heat in the sunroom. Um, the neighborhood is comprised of mostly small lots and if you look at the aerial, you'll see actually that these types of rear additions are not uncommon at all, uh, even in the immediate surrounding properties. Um, it won't create any type of, um, uncharacteristic detriment to the neighborhood. Um, clearly not any environmental issues and, um, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Okay, yeah, um, would you say, like, uh, since two thousand nineteen? I'm sorry, it's been there for twenty years, you're saying?
Yes, at least.
Everything's been there at least twenty years. Okay, has there been any complaints with the neighborhood?
Uh, not that we know of. We haven't been notified.
Haven't been notified. All right, uh, Lori, do we have anybody wanting to speak on this?
I don't have any correspondence. Anthony, do we have any speakers?
Mr. Lindsay, I do not have any speakers.
Okay, I, uh, I'd like to, uh, create the application type two as presented.
Second.
Motion is to grant the application type two as presented, seconded by Mr. Cunha. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Case number twenty-six, Carlos and Dana Letty, ten Pine Top Drive, Shirley. Property is located on the south side of Pine Top Drive, seventy feet west of Maple Lane, Shirley. Applicant requests rear yard and side yard variances for proposed in-ground swimming pool.
Mr. Lazar, I have the applicant, um, Dana Letty.
Hello, good evening, everyone.
We can't, this. Dana, Mr.?
Hi, hello, good evening.
Good evening. Can I just have, have your attention to the board's attorney so that way he can swear you in?
I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, I'm about the truth, help you.
Yes.
Yes.
Can I have your names, both your names, for the appearance?
Carlos Letty.
And Dana Letty.
And your address, please?
Ten Pine Top Drive, Shirley, New York, one one nine six seven.
Thank you. How would you like to present your case?
Hi, we are here on behalf of ourselves applying for a variance for a in-ground swimming pool with, um, seven feet setbacks off the. We would like to obtain a variant so we can, uh, have existing yard and patio space, uh, a patio that, that's existing. Any, uh, questions or anything that's not in code?
This is Charles Lazar. Any of your neighbors, uh, have a, any, uh, any swimming pools that are in-ground? I'm looking at an aerial and I see that your next door neighbor looks like they have above-ground circular pool in their backyard.
I, I think that's a trampoline, um, but.
Okay.
Some addresses, forty-six Arrowhead and forty-two Adobe, um, that also have pools as well with variances.
I see. Well, I can identify them except by the numbers, which are the lot numbers, or are they the addresses?
Mr. Lazar, these are the addresses.
These are the addresses, okay. Nonetheless, um, what was the reasoning for you to position the pool in that particular space?
Uh, we want to keep the existing patio that's already there.
Yes.
And we'd like to offset it a little bit, so when you walk out the backyard, you're not, you know, walking right into the pool.
Yes, I see.
So that is the reasoning for that.
Yeah, the reason why I question is that there, um, we have had many pools that have been presented to us, uh, this evening and in the past. Um, and we tried very hard to explore and discuss with the owners or the applicant reps to, uh, to see whether or not there is any concessions to moving it slightly so that we better conform, not, maybe not fully, but make an effort to better conform to the side yard and the rear yard. Uh, requirements. And one of them is, would you consider making the pool smaller, especially in this one, twenty-eight feet? Or would you reposition the pool so at least you, say for instance, a rear yard, you might be able to get ten, ten feet off the rear yard and then reduce the separation between the house and, and the pool to eleven feet. Even that is one consideration. Um, other than that, uh, I see where you're trying to preserve the position of the pavers. It's conducive to the outdoors and will probably be used in conjunction to the swimming pool. So, would you consider increasing the rear yard different, uh, distance?
Um, increasing the distance between the back fence.
Yes.
And moving it up, yeah, um, the distance between the house and the pool, we were trying to keep within code.
It would still be in code, I think.
I, yeah, I see, okay.
I, I know it's not good to go anything close to the house. We like to keep it away from the foundation.
Yeah, well, in my opinion, I think you, you would be far away if you were eleven feet. Uh, to preserve the underside of the footings of the foundation. I don't see professionally that being a problem, but in any event, um, I have no further question.
I did. I have a question.
Yes.
Uh, so you've made this application, you've notified your neighbors. Have any of the neighbors voiced any complaints to the, uh, or objections to the eight-foot, uh, setbacks?
No, not that we know of.
Have you spoken to any of them about it?
A few, the neighbors on each side, the neighbor behind us, we speak, but we haven't spoken in a few months. They're like, I don't know if we have different, um, you know, schedules, but.
Okay, um. And, but so, so no one's voiced an objection to it?
No.
I noticed the, the interest, the interesting thing about your backyard is that the, the, the patio does take up substantial amount of room. Uh, the pool itself is only twenty-eight feet. It's really not that long as, as pools go. It's fourteen feet wide. It's, uh, except for the, uh, the stairs coming into it. Um, I have nothing further. Thank you.
Any further questions?
No, no, not for mine.
Any, any speakers, Anthony?
Mr. Lazar, I do not have any speakers at this moment.
Any other letters, Lori?
I have nothing.
All right, then I'm making a motion to, uh, uh, grant the application, uh, submitted type two action.
Second.
I have a motion to grant the application as submitted type two by Mr. Lazarus, seconded by Mr. Berksen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lindsay. Good night.
Case number twenty-seven, Christopher and Kristen Amcher. Twelve Long Pond Road Ridge, located on the south side of Long Pond Road, three hundred and twenty-eight feet east of Oakview Trail Ridge. Applicant requests side yard variance for proposed in-ground swimming pool.
Mr. Berks, and I have Diana Laspisa for the applicant.
Okay.
It's coming up right now. Good afternoon, Mrs. Laspisa. Can I just have your appearance for the record since you were previously sworn?
Diana Laspisa with Moreno Expediting Services, twenty-nine thirty-eight Hempstead Turnpike, Levittown, New York, one one seven five six. Good evening, vice chair, members of the board, Diana Laspisa, here on behalf of the property owners, Christopher and Kristen Amcher. And we're requesting permission to install an in-ground swimming pool in the rear of the property, which will be holding, uh, proposing a seven-foot side yard setback off of the Easterly property line. And, um, they will maintain the rear yard setback off of the back. The property does, it backs up to state property and then the property owner to the east is actually, um, Mrs. Amcher's parents. Um, so they have no objections regarding the application. The reason why they want to put it in this side of the yard is because they do have some very large pine trees on the other corner of the property, so this is the sunniest part of the yard and they're just trying to, um, keep it as far away from the pine trees and out of the shade as possible. Know if the board has any questions?
Yes, hi Diane.
Hi.
Berksen. So, as you know, we, we do grant variances, you know, for in, in the vicinity of this, uh, of this, uh, dimension, but usually it's for a reason. You know, to, for a practical reason that in, that, that in terms of the property. And I, I'm not really hearing a reason why this can't be as, as Charles has said, you know, more in conformity. Why can't this? Couldn't this be, uh, ten, eleven feet? I mean, the, the property. couldn't this be, uh, ten, eleven feet? I mean, the, the property is a hundred feet wide. Uh, you want it seven feet, seven feet under these circumstances would be in, to me, would be an unusually generous, if I can use that word, uh, grant. Uh, and I, I'm wondering whether you have the discretion to, uh, to amend the application to make it like, more like ten feet.
Um, I believe they would be able to shift it ten, um, and still be outside of the shape, you know, far enough away from those pine trees. Also, another thing, um, that was a concern to the pool builder is the other corner of the property. Um, at one point in time, there was a, an in-ground pool in that location also. Um, so he was concerned with building a new pool in the same location because the soil not being virgin. But I think ten feet, they would be able to, um, still accommodate, you know, the pool that, that they want to build. And if that would satisfy the board, I think that the applicants would be okay with ten feet.
So if you, is that a motion to amend?
Yes.
Okay, I, I, or request amend, I'll make the motion to amend. Second.
Motion is to amend the application for a ten-foot side yard on the easterly.
Easterly side yard.
Um.
Yeah.
I believe it's the westerly side yard, easterly if you're looking down on it.
Well, depends on survey.
Oh, yeah.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter which way you look down on it, Anthony, it's either east or west.
It's the arrow above, look at it, Anthony.
Yeah, it's, it's the eastern side.
Easterly, southeast.
Right. So the motion is to amend the application on the southeast side for a ten-foot side yard, seconded by Mr. Cunha, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Uh, is there any speakers on this, Anthony?
Mr. Berksen, there are no speakers for this case.
Does the board, any of the board members have a, any questions? No, hearing none, and Lori, I assume there's no letters, correct?
I have nothing.
So I'm going to make a motion to approve the application as amended, uh, ten-foot side yard, uh, type-two. Second.
Motion is to, um, motion is to grant the application with the amended ten-foot side yard, seconded by Mr. Mazarella, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, have a good night.
Good night.
Case number twenty-eight, Evan and Christine Silverman, nine Highview Road, Stony Brook. Properties located on the north side of Highview Road, three hundred and seventy-two feet east of Christian Avenue, Stony Brook. Applicant requests rear yard variances for proposed one-story residence addition and proposed covered porch. Height variance and rear yard variance for proposed addition to detached garage and partial reconstruction of existing detached garage, creating entire garage area exceeding the six hundred square feet permitted, eight hundred and twenty-six square feet, and exceeding the fourteen-foot high permitted, eighteen feet.
This is Mazarella, I have Michael McCrina for the applicant, uh, architect. Uh, Mr. McCrina, can I just get your attention to the board's attorney to have swear you in?
Sure. Uh, my name is, uh, Michael McCrina, I'm the architect for Evan and Christine Silverman, located at twenty-one Main Street, Stony Brook, New York.
Can you just give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn in?
You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, the whole truth.
I do.
Thank you.
Um, my, uh, my clients, Evan and Christine, are proposing an addition to their home. Uh, it's a small home, it's a cave cot, um, and they're just looking just to make it a little more functional for them and the family. Uh, a minor addition, um, they have a, an existing master bedroom on the first floor, and there's no bathroom uh, on that level for them, a full bathroom, so we're looking to add a full bathroom and walk-in closet, uh, of modest size. Um, and a little porch behind it, um, just to square, square it off with, uh, the den addition that look to add as well. The house, uh, currently only has, well, only has a kitchen, dining room and a living room, they're looking to have a TV room as well. And, um, and then a little mudroom coming in from the driveway and a powder room. Um, and, um, there's really no other place to, uh, place the addition, uh, that would work for their needs, uh, except for behind the house, and the lot is very shallow. So it pushes us into, uh, coming in front of you guys to help us, uh, um, get some relief on that. Uh, my, they're also looking to, uh, do it, uh, request another variance for, uh, uh, renovation to their detached garage. Uh, it's currently, uh, five hundred and fifty square feet, I'm sorry, uh, their garage is five hundred and sixty-three square feet. Um, it's small, um, uh, I gotta say, the, part of it is in bad shape, half of it's in bad shape, and they're looking to reconstruct that part. I guess it was an addition put on at one time. And, um, my client is a collector of cars and motorcycles, and he has, he's looking for some storage for those items. Um, and also just looking for storage in general, because the house doesn't have much, uh, storage, not much of a basement. It's a very shallow, low basement, so there's not much room down there in the house. So, um, he requested a, a three-car garage is what he's looking for. As for the location, approximately to the property line, the existing garage is like three-point-one feet from the property line. Uh, we were, we were, we were proposing to salvage part of the existing garage, the, the, the nicer section, um, uh, and rebuilding the one that was, uh, an addition put on at one time and expanding that. So we're holding that three-point-one feet to match what's there. Um, and, uh, yeah, um, the height of the garage is, uh, worked out with the size of the garage and get the scale right and to, to kind of match the architecture of the house. It rose to like just under eighteen feet. Um, the, the one thing to keep in mind is the backside of the garage, um, is the property goes up about two feet in the back of the property, a back of the garage, or it's just an existing stone retaining wall there, that's two feet tall. So on the neighbor's side, it's actually under, um, uh, sixteen feet on that side. And, uh, it appears that the neighbor on, on the other side of the property has like a detached structure that's behind it as well. So it doesn't, I don't feel like it's going to be any, uh, um, a problem towards the neighbor. Any questions?
I thank you. Uh, good evening. I, um, I want to start with the garage, I guess, um, when, um, the original structure, um, that was there, or that is there. And, can, uh, can you tell me what the height, is that, is it included on there, what the height of the structure is now?
Yeah, the garage is currently, um, I have it written down here. It is. It's It's fifteen feet tall right now, approximately.
Fifteen feet, and so you want to add an additional five?
Or? No, to the height?
Additional three.
No, additional three.
Three feet to go to eighteen. Um, so, uh, is this going to be a, um, a traditional-looking three-car garage? Where you have three garage doors and a, uh, and a peak in the middle somewhere, or, um, do you have any, uh, any plans? What this garage is going to look like, or?
Oh, sure. Let me, uh, direct you to my screen, I don't know how to do that with the zoom, except just grab my phone and reverse in the picture. So this is what we're looking at. The left side is a man door that was, that's existing, that was there, it's part of the original garage, the, that's the original garage roof on the left side. And then the two bays, we did a roof, and then, uh, the third bay on the right, I did a little shed roof, architecturally, just so it didn't look too, too prominent. So I was just, I was really just maintaining really the look of a two-car garage, with just a little wing on the right side for that extra storage that he was looking for.
Gotcha. So, um, the structure, uh, the, the top of the garage, I see you have a window there. And, um, can you tell me a little bit about what that, um, space above, uh, you know, will, will provide for? As far as, uh, you know, how are you going to get up there, and then what, what will be, what will be the use and the, um, uh, purpose of that?
The space will be completely open to the roof, there's no, uh, there'll be nothing there. Um, I'm probably going to have a structural ridge at the top, so it's just one big open space, there'll be no floor. It really just be so he can put, uh, shelving along, you know, on, uh, the backside, get a lot of storage. Uh, maybe there might be a, a very minor, a small little loft, I don't know what to call it loft, but just for storage, just to get extra, uh, stuff up there, um, just to get in that little extra height.
Okay, so there's not going to be a ceiling across, uh?
No, no, just, like I said, maybe just a little storage shelf, like, you know, if you want to call it that, just for extra storage.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm talking maybe two foot deep, three foot deep, not, but there will be no, no floor.
Any other utilities aside from electricity?
No.
Right, and, um, so Anthony, can I take a look at the, uh, uh, the surrounding properties? Maybe you can bring that up a little bit.
Number four, Highwood has, um, oh, I'm seeing Highview, I'm sorry, um, has a very tall garage. I don't know what date is on it, it's closer to Christian, but it, it looks like it's got to be about eighteen feet tall.
Okay. And, uh, and so you, this garage is then going to back up to, it would be lot number eighteen in that corner there, or is it in the opposite corner? Trying to.
Oh, it, it. So if you're looking, looking at that aerial, it's in the bottom left, it's, it's in the bottom.
The bottom right, not the top right?
Oh, wait.
The bottom right, oh, no, Highview.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking, it's, it's the top right, the top.
Top right, yeah, so it'll, so it's going to be in that, that nook there, uh, on the, with lot number eighteen.
That's correct.
And, uh.
Yeah, it's a little hard to see. Yes, that's correct. And lot eighteen appears to have a, some kind of storage shed that backs up right behind this garage.
Back in his, in his corner there.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a little hard to see, but I, I saw pictures of it.
Right. Okay. Um, and has, uh, has any of the neighbors reached out as far as, uh, the expansion of this, uh, of this garage back there?
Nothing that I'm aware of, um, my client has not informed me of any.
Is there a, I'm trying to see on the survey, is there a, is there a fence that goes across or no?
Yes.
There is, right?
It, it, it appears that's the neighbor's fence, it's hard to say, but it's a four-foot chain link fence.
Okay. All right, so this, uh, this garage is going to be in clear view to whoever can see from the back, I imagine.
Yes, um, there are, uh, evergreens along the property line, it looks like it's on the neighbor's side, on number eighteen. Yeah, there's a lot of, uh, evergreens along the back. Uh, right now, it was actually even hard to even get back there because it's a lot of screening from the neighbors.
Right, uh, so number fourteen, looks like their driveway is a long driveway that they get access from Stony Brook Avenue, that's what it appears to, because they're almost like, uh, they're almost landlocked in between all the lots there, really, um. Um, is there any, uh, communication on this, Lori?
Yes. Um, Anthony, do we have any speakers, though, here for this?
You're on mute, Anthony.
What?
I do not have any speakers who have identified themselves.
Okay, uh, yeah, I have, uh, like, four, um, letters, but the first one I want to read is from the HDAC. Um, their comments are, they recommend approval, provided that the applicant submit cut sheets, detailed specifications of proposed garage doors and exterior lighting for the HDAC's approval. Um, and then I have letters from, uh, neighbors. I have one from, uh, Dale Deutsch of twenty-one Stony Brook Avenue, and Lou Deutsch. Um, we object strongly to the proposed variance for this property, the homeowners already appear to be conducting auto repair at this site that makes considerable noise in the neighborhood, and we do not wish to turn this property into a commercial enterprise. This is a historic neighborhood and should be kept that way by adhering strictly to, uh, the current zoning laws. From Roger Love of eighteen Stony Brook Avenue, I have an email I am writing to object to the proposed variance. We are gravely concerned about the potential negative quality of life and property value effects. Um, the drastic garage expansion could result in for us. Their current garage and driveway extension are situated approximately four feet from our property line. As such, an expansion of the building, including the proposed height elevation, could create an even more adverse eyesore. As we are unable to attend the virtual meeting, we will be working, we thank you in advance for taking our concerns into consideration, including strict adherence to current zoning laws. And from Linda and Robert Turner of twenty Stony Brook Avenue, uh, we would like to express our objection. When we first moved into our house, there was a wooded area between their house and ours. Most of the trees have since been removed, placing us in full view of their activities. The family currently in this house has also constructed a basketball court directly next to our backyard, which is narrow. Although I don't object to them doing this for their children, we are often awakened by the basketball late into the night. There is also a spotlight on the court that goes into our house. The homeowner also has motorcycles that are revved often, we are concerned that the enlargement of the garage will cause a number of issues. First is the sheer size blocking views, second is the concern that he's doing this in order to bring home much of his mechanic, mechanics business, creating more noise issues and lowering the value of the homes around him. The home is in Historic District of Stony Brook Village, and there are certain property standards we believe should be adhered to. These standards, in, these standards are particularly important when new construction may have an impact on the neighborhood. And that's all I have.
All right, thanks, Lori.
You're welcome.
Um, so are you aware, is, is, is Mr. Silverman a mechanic by trade?
Yes, he is. He's a, he's a mechanic by trade, he loves to tinker, and he has a lot of toys, um, they are very loud, there's no doubt about it. And I'm assuming that's where this is all coming from. He has a pickup truck that is very loud, uh, he, you know, he has a Jeep, an old Jeep. You know, the motorcycles, I mean, I don't know what to say about that, you know, that's just what he likes. Um, I don't believe he's, he's running any kind of business in his garage, but I, of course, I, I'm not positive on that. Um, from what I saw when I was at the house, it appears just to be a normal garage with a lot of tools. You know, just a regular garage, with some of its, you know, tinkers mechanics, um, but I don't believe he's running a commer, I'm not too sure if he's running any kind of commercial business in his garage.
Gotcha. Okay, I, I appreciate your candor and, uh, and, and all the information you provided, I want to open it up to any board members if there are any other questions.
I have a question, Maz.
Sure, Charles, thank you.
Mr. McCrina, um, I saw the, the sketch that you held up for the camera, and, um, from my understanding, you have a tri-part reconstruction, one, which is the original, and that's to the left of any one of your floor plans. The middle is removing and replacing something that is dilapidated, so to speak.
Correct.
And then, and then the very right side of your plan, I'm imagining this in my own mind, that would be a, a total addition, proposed, new. But then when you held up the, uh, the elevation sketch, I can see where you have a ridge line that goes horizontal uh, to the original, uh, position. Then you intend to put in a ninety-degree opposition ridge line, which is higher than the, than the other. And then you resorted to a shed roof for the totally proposed new addition. And with that, you have, you have two intersecting ridges, one higher than the other, which I might suggest to you to lower that, to intersect with your, with your new or your existing ridge. And why isn't it not architecturally or structurally possible? And then, of course, the shed roof, um, I, I don't see any. But apparently, in your presentation, you indicated that this is, uh, viewed as an architectural, uh, how you view it architecturally, is there anything preventing you from re- Is there anything preventing you from re, reviewing the potential of lowering that ridge line and their, the, the eighteen-foot ridge line and, and lower it so that it could be more in conformance and probably assuage your neighbors?
Yeah, you know, when I'm laying out, uh, any kind of roof design, um, especially, you know, when you're working with a, a traditional home, a Cape Cod home, and I'm trying to complement the existing house, um, you, you kind of want a, a roof pitch that, you know, y- you know, that looks somewhat proportioned to the house as best you can. And it is much shallower than, than the house, I can't match the house, this thing would be over twenty feet. But, um, when you drop the ridge down, what happens is you get a, a very, a very low pitch, and architecturally just doesn't look good, but that's, that's kind of how, it was really just done mainly just to get, you know, the, the architecture to look good, you know, but.
You, you're talking about aesthetics.
Yeah.
Well, if you lowered the ridge line, would it have any impact on your outward motion of your structure by putting in uh, horizontal time beams, especially if you're leaving this entire inside open? And there is, there is no, uh, there is no platform up there to create habitable space or not habitable, but walk around or storage space, uh, would you reconsider that?
To lower the ridge of the, the new?
Well, that's my objection to.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not saying you should do it, I'm just saying, would you, would you, could, do you feel professionally that it would be a, uh, a feat or a solution that you have some, uh, structural trepidations or whatever? What's your opinion?
Yeah, um. Can it be done? Sure, um, you know, structurally, it can be done, um. It's just, I mean, it's definitely not gonna look the same, that's for sure, um, but, uh.
Well, my, my point is, the, the, you're talking about shallow pitches. You got a fifteen-foot ridge on the original building, but, you know, how is the proportion with respect to viewing it from the opposite side, from the eastern side, the western side of the building? Does it appear to be, uh, a more formidable in, in line with the, the architecture? Is it a flat pitch? Are we talking about opposites or the same thing?
That, that's exactly what would happen, is, it, the fifteen foot that's on that left side that was salvaging, um, it's a very steep pitch, it's actually, almost looks like a forty-five degree roof pitch.
Yeah.
So, I was trying not to put it too low, that would really look odd against the twenty, you know, forty-five degree pitch. Um, I think we have like a seven pitch on that, uh, or eight pitch, you know, whatever, you know, whatever, you know, so, I'm trying not to, I was trying to, like I said, I was just trying not to go too high, but at the same time, try not to, you know, trying to just marry the two together. If I go lower, it's gonna definitely look a little odd, um, a very shallow pitch next to a, uh, forty-five degree pitch, that's pretty much how I got to where I am.
I understand that, but I, I, I was just trying to, uh, kind of like, uh, symbolized with the matching ridges, because you're gonna have some, you're gonna have, you're gonna have a couple of valleys in there that you're gonna have to really, uh, pump at to make them, to make them work, but nonetheless, this is a conversation, I'm just bringing out a couple of points to you.
Sure.
Jimmy, I have a question.
Go ahead, Howard, thanks.
Okay, so, listen, your client would like us to give permission to expand this use, right now, I, I, I vow to Charles's expertise with respect to the roof line and, and yours with respect to the architectural, uh, appropriateness in terms of matching the house. My concern is that he wants, your client wants permission to expand the use, and he's operating this while technically legal, legally, he wants permission to, for us to, he wants us to grant him a variant so that he could expand the use in a manner that is apparently, let's just say, unneighborly. And he wants us to exercise our discretion in that regard, and I'm just not, right now, I'm not hearing any reason why, and I may change my mind, the board is gonna consider, and I only have one vote, and I don't know how that vote's gonna come out yet, but right now, I'm hearing someone who's appar, who wants to expand the use and operate it and, and conduct themselves and his family in a manner that's just abusive. Tell me I'm wrong, I'm willing to listen. I don't know how you'd like to proceed at this point, and I have no idea whether, what the feelings are among the other members of the board. But that's, that's what I'm hearing, and I, I'm certainly willing to listen to your response.
Mr. McCrina, I, I believe, I believe what, what my colleague is trying to get at here is the fact that, uh, when applications are brought before us, um, for us to, um, exceed on the code, um, this board acts on that and, and, and usually does for good reason. Um, and, and, and it seems that you really are just serving the purpose as the architect here. Uh, I don't, I don't believe that you have all the history or all the information with which to really uh, bring to this board. Um, in, in fact, when I asked you if, uh, any neighbors were opposed, or if your client had spoken to anyone, uh, you said, well, you know, it is really not to my knowledge that, you know, and it would affect anyone or anyone had any complaint at all, and, and I'm not, uh, I'm not casting any, uh, a, any blame on you for that. Uh, because, again, I think you're just serving as the architect here, and, and you're trying to, uh, you know, help out your client. Uh, but the problem we have as a board, um, I'm pretty much echoing the sentiment of, uh, Mr. Bergson, and the fact that, um, there's not just one neighbor that has a concern, there are four neighbors, and their concern, and their concerns to be, seem to be parallel, which is, you know, which raises a red flag to us here. So, uh, you know, I, I think, wh- what we'd like to do probably tonight is, at best, hold this over, but I think you need to go back to your client and report on, uh, what you heard tonight, and maybe he needs to speak to some of his neighbors, and you all need to go back to the drawing board possibly on this garage. Uh, because obviously, um, it, you know, you know, if we're gonna give you some concessions on it, um, you know, it's gotta sit right, um, wi- within the neighborhood.
Um, what, would there be, uh, what if I was to reduce the roof pitch to match the existing roof pitch of fifteen feet?
Uh, that's not gonna be acceptable right now, not to me, anyway, I'm sorry, Jimmy, I didn't mean to jump on you, but.
Can I, can I make a comment, please?
Sure.
Sure. Thanks, Jim, um, okay. With, we, we've discussed, and we've discussed the garage over and over, um, and what he has existing right now is fifteen feet, and I get that, and I understand that you're, but we, we also haven't even touched on, what, what are the additions for on the house? I mean, what, what are those rooms for? And why we need side yard variances on something that could line up, you know, directly with the house, we haven't even touched on that. Um, but, and I understand that the garage is an issue with the neighbors, but I'm concerned also about what, what is that addition to the house being used for?
Well, I, I did explain that in my introduction, um, but I could re-explain, um, the, the home has the left side of the house, um, the fourteen-by-nineteen foot space of the existing over the bay window is, that's their master bedroom, um, the house only has two bedrooms upstairs, it's a very small house. Um, so the children are upstairs, they're downstairs, but they have no full bathroom downstairs, so they would like to add a full bathroom. Um, there's, so, you know, it just seemed, you know, so we, we decided to put it in the back. There's really no room in the front, and there's really, there's no room on the side. Um, and if I go on the side, then it affects the egress windows and bedroom or the bay window, so we put the bathroom in the back and a walk-in closet.
No, I get, I, I get that, you're doing, you're adding more rooms, but I mean, the house is almost, I mean, you're adding half a house back there, where you could have gone up and actually, you know, made a colonial out of a Cape Cod.
They love, they love the house, uh, just, I mean, they love the Cape Cod, they just didn't want it to look too overwhelming.
And the other question I have for you is, is why, I, what are we looking at, uh, side yard, twenty-five-two from the house, twenty-four-six, you're looking at, what, eight inches? More, more or less, uh, why did we have to go for a side yard variance there?
No, this is a rear yard variance.
Um, okay, the twenty-four-six is to the rear of the house?
No, the, the side yard setback is twenty feet, it's a B-one residence.
Okay, okay, so I just wanted to make sure.
It's a, it's a rear yard setback.
Okay.
The hardship here is the lot's very shallow, I mean, so just not much room to expand back there, but we didn't go out, we went back a little bit, um, to add a den, an extra living space also, because the house doesn't have.
Alright, that was, that was my mistake, because I was just looking at the highlighted green area, uh, there's the highlights online here, okay, I get it. Um, so all that, all that on the back of the house is extra bedroom, a bathroom, what else?
No, 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 it's, it's, it's a bathroom closet and a, and a TV room, you know, a den and a, uh, a little mudroom and powder.
Little mudroom and powder room. Okay, so I'm assuming you're redesigning the first floor of the house?
No, we're not touching the rest of the house.
You're not?
No.
Interesting, okay.
Yeah, the house is, you know, they, they, they've renovated the house, they don't wanna, you know, they just wanted to, wanted this, they just needed a little extra room on the first floor, and they really didn't want to touch, we're not really touching the outside of the existing house, except they're gonna be doing new siding, all that's been approved by HDAC, uh, new siding roofing, some trim, it's got, you know, vinyl siding, they want to do something nice on the outside. But they love the simple, uh, appearance of the, the Cape Cod, they just.
Gray, you're telling me the gray area already exists, you said they're not touching the outside of the house? Where it says proposed addition?
That's, yeah, that's gonna be the addition, um, we're not touching the, the existing portion of the house.
Okay.
We're not touching the interior portion of the existing.
Okay, okay. Alright, um, and now you're, now, let me just go back to the garage, because I'm just curious. You've got eighteen feet in height, you have eight hundred and twenty-six square feet, you're saying you're going, basically, you're, there is no, they're only gonna be colotized up there, basically, is what you're saying, no swords, no nothing. Are there, and I don't know if anybody asked this, because I'm trying to figure this out, are there any garages that you found in the area that are this size? I know you pointed one out that seemed like it was eighteen, but you didn't address the size. Um, and you thought it might be eighteen, do you have any proof anywhere that any of these garages in the neighborhood have been approved by this board with the same specifics that you're asking for?
No, I do not.
You know, because I mean, the, this board, this board has to act, uh, you know, has to act responsibly to the neighborhood, as my colleagues have said, but at the same time, we, we need to see that, you know, was there any precedent set in the neighborhood? And if, if you can't, if you can only assume that that garage is even there with a permit from either us or the town of Brookhaven. Assumption doesn't help us. Uh, also, I wanted to ask where, where that letter mentioned a sports court or basketball court, I'm, I'm guessing it's the little area on the, uh, survey that says asphalt?
Yeah, that's, that's the area.
And it's supposedly a light there as well from the neighbors, uh, which is not on the survey as well, which, uh, town of Brookhaven, you know, greatly frowns upon light pollution. Um, and if that neighbor has an issue with that, I, I would definitely, uh, like to see something addressed there for that neighbor.
Okay.
And that's basically all, I, I just wanted to figure out what, what was what, because we've been jumping around on, on the garage only, so I just wanted to see exactly what was what, because I've lost part of this conversation, so I appreciate you clarifying everything.
Well, no problem.
Sorry, Jimmy.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alright, so, uh, you know, again, uh, Mr. McCrina, I, 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 I think you have some homework to do and maybe, uh, some talking with your client, um, Lori, I don't know if we can propose another date, or?
Yeah, we can hold it over to February tenth, um, and, you know, if he's gonna make revisions to the request, um, he can let us know, he'd, you know, have to go back to the building department, gets, get the denial done, and we'd have to re-advertize and stuff if the changes are substantial, um, but it would give him time to, um, at least talk to his clients and come back to us with what, you know, the resolution.
Could I just understand, um, so, as for the, the, the house addition, um, was there any objection, like, uh, any discussion on that? I just kind of want to know how to go back to my client, um, because I really didn't talk about the house variance.
Uh, it, it doesn't appear to me that, that the addition is, uh, is problematic, uh, for the board, at least I, I'm not hearing that, uh, but I think, I think you have a lot of consideration on that garage, and, and that the, uh, you know, the neighbors are, are certainly, uh, are, are certainly heightened to it, and, uh, you know, the fact that it's, uh, you know, the height and the size of it, um, is something that I think you need to speak to your client about, and you know, and, and just in, in general, um, their, their neighborly actions, um, I think are with, probably, you know, usually, you know, when, when people want to put structures up, even if they're, even if they're too big and too high, they're good neighbors, in, in most cases, they don't, uh, seem to have too much of a problem, and I think this board is, is pretty understanding uh, when people want to expand their properties or put pools in or fences in, and, you know, we try to uh, be fair, um, for the homeowner to, you know, to improve their quality of life as well, but we can't, um, when we look at things, we certainly can't look at it favorably, um, if it's going to be a detriment to quality of life that's, that's surrounding the project, so, so I think you have a pretty good flavor for, you know, uh, the comments that you received tonight from the board, as well as the, uh, the letters, and I'm sure that, you know, Mr. Cardy could, uh, furnish some of those communications for, for you, for your client, and, uh, you know, um, does that sound reasonable to you, the amount of time? Um, I think that she can give you a date further out if you'd like that, uh, but, um, you know, I think at this point, um, certainly gonna have to, uh, do some revising and, 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 and have conversations with your, uh, with your client.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like, um, any modification to this garage is a real, real discussion, um, uh, you know, so, you know, the house, the garage is five sixty-three, fifteen feet tall, um, we got a couple square feet to conform within six hundred. Can't move the existing garage, it's gonna stay where it is, uh, there's nothing you can do about that, um. But, uh, you know, the concern, you know, I, I just, to go back to my client, I just need to know what some parameters are that would make the board feel very comfortable with a, a February hearing, um, you know, uh, you know, if, you know, if the, the existing garage is fifteen feet tall, I believe we're, we're allowed to maintain that height, I believe so, I'm not positive, but I have to double check the code on that. But the square footage is the issue, um, so.
Well, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's it.
The, you know, the, 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 the code is actually fourteen feet, um, but I think if you came in here tonight with fifteen feet, and, uh, again, a little bit more, uh, favorability from the neighbors, uh, you know, we'd be having a different conversation here, and, you know, so, you know, so, within reason, uh, you know, again, if it's fifteen feet now, um, I, I don't think a foot is gonna make a difference, but I, I certainly think the activities are a concern, um, you know, maybe he's not running a business, maybe he is. Um, you know, these are some of the things that, that you're gonna need to discuss with him.
Understood.
And, uh, I don't know, Howard, uh, you wanted to say?
One more thing?
No, no, I'm, I, I think we are, I, I think I'm just gonna leave it, I think I made myself clear.
I just have one more thing, Jimmy.
Yeah.
Um, just, uh, Michael, uh, the, the plan that you showed us, was that submitted to the HDAC?
Yes, and it was approved.
So that's the plan that they referred to when, uh, they, they gave their letter to Lori, okay. So this was already all submitted, including, including the house extension, the garage, everything was submitted to the HDAC.
That's correct.
It's their letter of approval.
Yeah, these plans were completed in August, and, uh, they, their approval letter was dated September, uh, sometime in September, I think. Yeah, I think it was like September eleventh.
Alright, I just wanted to clarify that, so they didn't have an issue with this at all, alright.
Yeah, we, we have their approval, yes.
I just want to, uh, put on the record that HDAC also said, if there's any revisions to the plans they saw, it needs to be resubmitted.
So Lori, do you want to give him a choice of date, or?
Well, here's the thing, February tenth is the only date that we have within the thirty days, so he doesn't have to re-notify neighbors. Um, so if we hold him. Within the thirty days, so he doesn't have to re-notify neighbors. Um, so if we hold him to February tenth and he needs more time. He can on, you know, request a postponement from February tenth and then I can put him further out. Um, but February tenth would be the best thing to do right now, so he doesn't have to re-notify and repost. Um, for the next hearing.
Sounds good to me. Um, I just I'll just call and find out what you need from me and what the dates are, the deadlines, to get anything to you. Okay.
Okay, just call my office and they'll give you my email and contact information. And let me know how your conversations are going with the applicant.
I will make the motion to close and hold.
Uh, no.
Hold over, hold over.
Hold open until February tenth.
Motion is by Jim Azarella to hold over to February tenth, seconded by Mr. Lindsay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. McCree.
Thank you very much.
Okay, case number twenty-nine, Donna Goner, care of Tracy's permits, property is located on the south side of Marla Drive. Two hundred and four feet east of Phyllis Lane Quorum. Applicant requests side yard variance for existing shed.
Mr. Wisdom, I have Tracy Rivera for the applicant. Um, Ms. Rivera, can I just get your appearance for the record?
Sure, uh, Tracy Rivera, offices located eighty Terry Street, Patchwork New York, one one seven seven two.
Thank you. How do you want to present your case?
Oh, yes. So um, I'm here representing Mr. and Mrs. uh, Goner. Um, they're looking to legalize a few things on their property while doing such. Uh, it came to our attention that this shed is going to require a variance. Um, we're three point four feet off the property line where we we are required to be ten. Due to the fact that the shed is over a hundred and forty-four square feet, the shed is uh sixteen point one by ten point one. I submitted pictures of what the shed actually looks like from the front of the uh, the property. You could see that it just kind of like blends in. They have it nicely sided like the house. I've also submitted some pictures of some neighbors that also have sheds and side yards. Um, there's a a few neighbors that are down to the. Down to the east that have um, some this Marla Drive kind of goes down into like a like a dead end. So um, there's like number on the lot, number nineteen has a shed that's in the uh side yard. I don't know why you can't see in the aerial, but it's there now. And then if you go further west, you could see uh, the number two that's on the corner of Phyllis Lane and Marla Drive. That also has a very large structure in the corner and I submitted some pictures um with this application. So what we're looking to do before the board is an application that's very common before the board. It's usually viewed upon very favorably. Um, it's definitely within harmony of this neighborhood along with any other neighborhood. And I'll address any questions the board may have at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Wisdom, you're on mute.
Okay, Trace, I see it's uh, the shed is twelve foot high?
Yes.
Six sixteen, one inch. And ten by one inch. And in the height is twelve feet, right? Is that, is that common in this area?
Yes, I actually submitted several uh, several pictures of other houses in the area that have sheds similar to this size, even one that's quite larger.
Anthony, can we see those photos?
I do not have them in PDF. Uh, Ms. Rivera, um, I know that we have them in the file. But in the future, can you just send the PDF copy to either Lori or I and then I can have them placed on the screen?
Absolutely. Sorry about that. I would have done that. I'll do that in the future.
Okay.
So is it out of character for the neighborhood?
No, I mean, this is a common application, as you know. I mean, a lot of sheds are in side yards. People don't realize that.
And I do see plenty of, you know, to the west. It looks like there are.
I mean, Lori has the pictures up for you to look at.
Does she?
Are these the pictures Tracy that you sent? Because I only have this and the picture of the poster.
No, this, well, I I can't see you for some reason, but I know I see, I see, I I thought, or I should have attached like five pictures.
No, there's only this.
I could see a, I could see a a a peak. Um, on the other side of a white fence. On the right. So on the left, is that the shed we're talking about?
So if you see, if you, if you end up going down uh, where you see number eight is and directly across the street on Phyllis Lane. It may not be shown. I I was just at this property two Sundays ago hanging up the sign. And it's either number two or number, you could see how number two and then there's another number two right next to it. You have a giant structure that's right there.
Yes.
Okay, and then we also have, if we're looking at number sixteen sixteen, which is going in the opposite direction, has something as well. In the in the in the uh side yard and there is also number, I believe it's fifteen, directly across the street. Had a shed in the side yard that's over towards the um, west of the property, so that the neighbor directly across. You also have, if you go further back.
In the backyard. I do see that. So it's not out of character for the neighborhood?
Not at all.
I have nothing for other.
Mr. Wisdom, I don't have any speakers and I don't believe there's any correspondence. There's no correspondence either. Their motion?
So I'll make a motion to grant the application type two.
Second.
Motion is to grant the application as submitted type two, seconded by Mr. Cunha. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Everybody stay safe. Bye.
Have a good night.
You too, bye bye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can, hold on one second. Ms. Riccardi, we might have to reopen a case.
Which one?
The last one.
The one Goner, the one we just did with Tracy?
Yes, I have possibly a speaker.
Okay, are you sure?
I'm promoting him to find out. They never, they never numbered themselves.
Okay.
I tried promoting them. Alright, I guess not.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so then we're gonna go right into the holdovers. Um, case number thirty-one of November eighteenth, two thousand twenty, Frank Grotta, care of Woodhall Expediting. Property is located on the west side of Tenth Avenue, seven hundred and twenty-five feet north of Ridgewood Avenue, East Side Eleventh Avenue, Holsville. Applicant requests minimum and total side yard variances for existing deck with roof over and steps. Side yard variance for existing shed to be located in the required side yard. Permission for existing one-story residence addition and for existing conversion of attached garage to habitable space.
Or can you hold on one moment? Ms. Salvatore, Salvador? Sorry, Mr. Vito. Ms. Salvador, can you hear us? We can't hear you, Ms. Salvador.
Anthony, if you'd like, I could um, chat with her and give her a number to call in, if that would be helpful.
Um, I'm, I don't even know what she's here for.
Okay.
Need to move. Ms. DeVito, can I bring you back? I'm gonna push you back as a, an attendee. Sorry about that. Matt, if you want to chat with her. Um, and we're gonna move on to the holdover cases.
I'm gonna give her a phone number, Anthony, so we can get her on uh via telephone.
Yeah, let me know, just text me if, so I can look and see if, so we can get her on the phone number. I'm gonna put her back as an attendee.
Okay.
Anthony, she for this case?
She's actually for case twenty-nine. We just granted that. So we'll have to maybe possibly hold it open if Tracy, if you're still here. Um, don't go away. Mr. Riccardi, you already read the calendar for Grotto?
Yes.
I'm going to promote Ms. DeVito. And that's Mr. Cunha. Hi, Ms. DeVito. Can we just have your appearance for the record?
Amy DeVito with offices at ten thirty-one Main Street, Port Jefferson, New York, one one seven seven seven. Woodhall Expediting and I am agent for the applicant.
Ms. DeVito, I have your clients, Eileen and Matthew Grotto. Um, do you want me to bring them up?
Um, no, I think that we could uh leave them as attendees for now and and um, I'll make my presentation and we'll see if they want to come in.
That sounds perfect.
Okay, so uh, Mr. Cuna and members of the board, good evening. So um, we have a few things going on here, so I'm just gonna kind of start from the beginning. So um, this house was originally CO'd um, with the, if you're, if you're looking at the survey, the back.
Anthony, can you get the survey? Oh, sorry.
The back left corner. I'm not seeing my directional arrow on here. Am I losing it? Oh, no, I see it. Okay. So which would be the, the southwest corner? Um, that is the addition in question. So um, the way you guys are viewing it, it is the uh, area that's highlighted in pink.
Okay.
Okay, so that, that's the addition in question. That addition adds two hundred and thirty-three square feet to the. To the home and we're here for a variance tonight because the property is less than a hundred feet wide. So that particular area is actually a dining room. It connects directly to the kitchen and the den area. Then we have a garage conversion, which is on the um, east, uh, east side of the home, which is highlighted in yellow. That garage conversion is adding two hundred and fifty-two square feet to the premises. And again, we're here for a variance because we are less than a hundred feet width. Um, so we cannot add any permitted square feet with, I'm sorry, we can't add any square feet without uh coming for the board for variance. Uh, that particular area was actually converted to a laundry room slash home office area. And it is open to the uh, rest of the house. It's, it's just a kind of free-flowing area. I neglected to submit to Lori and Anthony the floor plans. I do have them here and I can hold them up if anybody does want to see them.
Amy, Amy, can I just ask you, I have a batch of, looks like revised surveys in my file. Is the survey that was up on the screen the correct survey? Because I have completely different surveys over here.
Yes, so so this is actually the one from when we originally submitted.
So this isn't the correct survey that we have up?
It's not, but it's, it, everything is there that I could talk about. I could just point out to you what changed.
Okay, I just needed to make that clear.
Yeah, it's pretty, uh, it was a pretty, uh, you know, simple change, so I'll be able to explain it. Um, okay, so so in essence, we are adding about four hundred and eighty square feet. Four hundred and eighty-five actually to the first floor together with the garage conversion and the addition. That is bringing the total first floor area to about fifteen hundred square feet, which is not um. Which is not uncommon for this neighborhood. Most of the houses in this neighborhood probably are, if not. More square footage on the first floor, close to that. Um, there is a, you know, a uh. There's varied sizes in the lots in this neighborhood. Um, the the lot in question happens to be one of the larger lots. Um, and again, the additional square footage is not uncommon and would not create a detriment to the neighborhood. It also doesn't create any environmental issues as we haven't added any bedrooms. Um, and again, it's just the typical first floor layout with a dining room and in this case, an added laundry room and home office. Um, okay, so then we also have the twenty-four foot by, or twenty-five foot rather, by ten foot shed in the side yard. Um, so i- if you look on the survey that's up, there is a uh, a pink highlighted shed. On the eleventh avenue side of the property. This is a through lot. That shed is actually going to be removed. Uh, there was a miscommunication between me and the homeowner originally, where I thought we were legalizing this one and removing the larger one. The larger one is on the um, the north side of the property next to the house in the required side yard. So uh, that's what Lori was referring to. That's the discrepancy. So the the twenty-five foot by ten foot shed, we are proposing to maintain. And we're here to request a variance for it because it's in the required side yard and it's right on to the property line. Um, it is, uh, it should be noted that the um, so sorry, my cuckoo clock is going off. Oh, it's seven o'clock in case.
It's just reminding us that we need to stop now.
I I knew that was gonna.
Why am I not surprised, Amy?
It's either Prudence or the cuckoo clock. It never fails. Prudence is actually standing right here. She's being very quiet.
Is the vice president still there?
Vice president, she is in attendance this evening. So the ten foot by twenty-five foot shed is used for storage. The reason why this uh shed is so important for my client to maintain is because they do not have a basement in this house. So they, they have very limited space for storage, so this shed provides the much-needed storage that they require. Um, there are photos of the interior of the shed in the photos um for you guys to see. But Anthony, before you switch off, let me just finish with the survey. So if you, um, where the shed is positioned, it's actually adjacent to a very, very large buffer. Um, it looks to me what would appear to be sterilized land, not developable, which buffers between. Um, this particular neighborhood that my client's in and the summer field, um, the summer field development, which is. A very large subdivision. So this is quite a large buffer in between. So the shed being on the side, in the side yard, right on the property line, virtually does not disturb anybody at all. Um, there is no uh, no homes at all outside of, or I should say. Beyond this buffer that are closer to, I want to say this is probably at least a hundred and twenty-five feet. So it's not creating any detriment to the neighboring properties. Um, and we also have a irregular deck with roof over. That is the highlighted area um, on the rear of the house, uh, right before the swimming pool. That is just a a typical deck with a roof over, just to provide some shade for the property. Um, it it, for the most part, stays within the established side yard setbacks for each side of the house. But the roof over does eclipse past the um, the northern property line, just about four feet. On that side. Uh, so again, not creating uh any type of um, detriment to the neighboring properties or neighborhood. And I am happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Okay, uh, Anthony, do we have an aerial by any chance? I just wanted to see, because I I believe I know the neighborhood uh quite well, actually. Okay, yeah, I do, I know exactly where we, where you are. Um, and I'm assuming that's the house?
Yes, that's the front of the house. Um, Anthony is really going through these fast.
Okay, and that's the pool and that's the covered, it looks like, is that screened in, Amy, or is that just?
No, it it's actually open. So that's the rear deck with the roof over.
Okay.
Yep, that's the shed and that's also uh, the side of the uh, roof over and deck that I was talking about. That uh, goes about four feet out from the established side yard setback.
I see, it protrudes into the side yard, okay. And it looked like that deck was not more than a foot or so off the ground.
Yeah, it's, it's not, um, it's, it's definitely less than a foot.
Now, where is this structure?
That is the uh framed garage with the roof over. Um, so that is the structure by the swimming pool, yes. So uh, the garage. So, the garage is used for car storage as well as, again, because of the lack of a basement, it's used for storage for household items and things like that. I've been in the garage, there's no living space in it, and it's used for storage. And then the roof over provides a canopy area for them to store their RV.
Okay. All right, so, so you, you're basically small lot ordinances putting you here for the square footage on the first floor, is that correct? You have more square footage on the first floor than?
No, I, I apologize. We're not single and separate, so it's actually not small lot ordered.
Okay, so.
It's just not.
Adding square footage?
Right.
Okay, all right, so, and, and you said a total of, it's approximately 1500 square feet? And that's the first?
That's correct. We're adding about 485 and it will total at 1500 on the first floor.
Anthony, can I see the front elevation again, if you don't mind? On the pictures? Okay, and that, the three windows together, that's the converted garage, is that correct, on the left-hand side of the house? Okay.
Yes.
All right, and in this area, we saw from the aerial, there are a lot of parcels the same size and, and similar homes in the area. There are homes that are similar in the area. And what about coverage, lot area coverage, we're okay with the area itself?
Yes, we, we, again, this is actually one of the larger lots for the neighborhood, because it is a through lot.
Most of them are either 80 by 100 or 100 by 100, correct?
So this is a little bit of bigger one, so we're okay with, with lot coverage.
Okay. And you had stated that the, now there's, is there any, there's no utilities or anything in the shed, is there, on the side, that 25 foot long shed?
I think there's just electric in there.
Just electric, no plumbing, no heating?
There is a photo of the interior in this batch.
Okay, oh, there we go. Okay, so it's basically storage. All right, um, I don't have any further questions. Does anybody, any board member have questions? I hear none, so I guess I'm gonna make a motion. I'm gonna move to grant the application as presented, type two?
Check.
Motion is to move, motion is to grant the application as presented, type two, seconded by Mr. Lindsay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion pass.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you, Amy. Have a good night. Board, we are going to, I'm gonna ask someone to make a motion to reopen case number 29. We did have a speaker on it. No, someone make the motion.
I'd like to make a motion to reopen case number 29 again.
Thank you. Motion is to reopen case 29, seconded by Mr. Razzarella, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, okay. Board, I have an Evelyn and John Salvador. I'm gonna promote them now. I believe they have a statement to make on 29, which was Tracy Rivera's case and shed in the side yard. Ms. Salvador, can you hear us? You have to unmute your phone.
Excuse me, Anthony?
Yes.
Amy DeVito is going to come on for this as a favor to Tracy, because Tracy's driving right now, so she can't re-enter the meeting. So Amy DeVito's trying to get back on for this case.
Okay. I think the, I think the speaker is just making a statement, so we may not need Rivera, Tracy.
Well, Tracy would want to hear, would want to be a part of that.
Ms. Salvador, I need you to unmute your phone.
Anthony, real quick, if, it would be a star six, so if they can hear us, they need to hit star six on their phone and it will unmute them on their telephone to speak. Hopefully they can hear that.
On their phone, you hit star six?
Correct, yep, on the telephone, they hit star six and it'll unmute them on their telephone.
Did you type that?
Yep.
Hello, everybody.
And you're back.
I am back. I'm going to assist with, for Tracy, because she is currently driving in her car.
Thank you. Matt, I can see her on her phone. She's working it. Nope, we can hear you, Ms. Salvador.
Okay, I'm so sorry, every time I try to go on, it didn't, it turned off the audio. Okay, so you can hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Okay.
Swear, Anthony.
Ms. Salvador, just give your attention to the board's attorney, so he can swear you in.
Good evening. You saw him swear, tell the truth, the whole truth about the truth.
Absolutely.
Just give us your name and address for the record.
Evelyn Salvador, 8 Marla Drive, Quorum, next door neighbors to the goners.
Okay, and what would you like to say?
Okay, are they, are they still on to hear this? Because I wanted them to hear this.
Well, their representative is.
Oh, okay. Okay, so I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my husband, John, who's also here with me now. We are the goners' immediate next door neighbor at 8 Marla Drive, where their shed is situated at our property line. While we had our own zoning board meeting a few years ago, and the goners adamantly disputed the approval of, of our existing apartment where our own daughter lives, and our above-ground pool that was a little too close to their fence was mandated that we tear it down. We are not here for revenge, but to state that we understand the importance of having a shed. And since it's, isn't affecting our property, we will not dispute it being there or having to move it. However, we do have a question. When Kenny complained to my kids about their playing in our yard, my kids had reported to the town that the goners' fence was installed backwards with the ugly side facing us. And if possible, we wish for it to be turned around according to zoning regulations. Can that be done?
John, do you want to jump, time in on this? This seems like a legal matter between neighbors.
You can certainly, I mean, you're saying the side of the fence with the beams on it? I think you're trying to say like, where someone could climb up, it's a stockade fence, I assume, right? Woodstockade fence?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
You said the, I'm, I'm a little, I need clarification on, you said the different side of the fence. Is this a woodstockade fence?
A wood fence, yes.
The slide, so the side facing you is the slide where the beams are visible, where someone, the three beams, is that you're saying?
Right, the back, right. It was supposed to be the other way around that we got the side that was correct.
Um, I'd have to check the code to see what the code, what the code speaks to, or check, check on my, my colleagues in the enforcement bureau just to. I'm not sure if the code does speak to that. I don't know if it caught my head. I have to really look. But I, you can reach out to a law department and we can look into this.
John, I believe if the person with the fence, with the pool on their side, needs to have, so that way the neighbor can't climb over easily.
Is it there? Is it there?
There is a pool there.
Oh, there is. I thought they said there wasn't. So.
Anthony?
Yes, Mr. Vito.
Can I see the survey, please?
That's my, that's my property, not theirs.
No, this is, this is the subject premises, Ms. Salvador. This is your neighbor's property. So, so there's a.
Excuse me, excuse me, what you're showing me is 8 Marla Drive on the corner of Phyllis. They are on the right-hand side. That's our property.
No.
No.
Ms. Ms. I'm not, I'm not, we're not gonna go back and forth. Ms. Salvador, look, the survey that's on the screen that you're seeing is actually Ms. Ms. Gonner's property. Do you, does it see how there's a swimming pool? There's no swimming pool on your property that I can see from the aerial. You're at eight, is that correct?
Correct, and we're on.
I'm going to zoom in on your property, and that's yours, and then here's a survey for their property.
But we're on Phyllis Lane, not them.
Right.
Anthony, she's seeing the tie line, Anthony. There's 200 feet to Phyllis Lane on this survey, ma'am.
Right.
So that's what you're, that's what you're missing. There's, there's a space there that says 200 and plus chain, I can't read it, but 204, it looks like.
Oh.
To the property line, yes.
It's a landmark. It marks our warrant is in Phyllis Lane.
Gotcha, gotcha.
I just wanted to state that I, I don't actually believe there's any written code pertaining to which way a fence actually has to face when it, when it comes to a swimming pool. I think it's just local procedure to have the nice side facing out to prevent people from climbing it. But I, I don't know that it's actually a written code. I am, I am also unsure if Tracy and her client are proposing to legalize the pool. I can't recall from when I was listening earlier. But if they are, the building inspector and the building department will enforce any required code for fencing. For that would be dealt with.
That is accurate, actually. Again, I, I certainly can, if you would like to speak to me further on this issue, Ms. Salvador. You can call the law department tomorrow and I'll, and I will check this issue. But overall, Mr. DeVito's, regardless, Mr. DeVito's correct that any, they are here for variance relief. They still have to go back to the building department. And before any CO is issued, that they're gonna make sure there's no violations of any aspect of the code, regardless of whether it's in the application of the zoning board or not. So, we certainly can give you a piece of mind whether this is, needs to be addressed by the code and also make the building department aware of it if need be. You certainly, our building, our number at the law department is 451-6500. So we can totally check this issue for you, just to give you with the clarity. But also, as Mr. DeVito pointed out, the building department will hopefully do a final inspection on the parcel or see if any non-compliance of any aspect of the code before they even give a CO for the structure.
Okay, fine, and.
Do you want me to do a motion?
I'm sorry? Hello?
That was.
I can't hear you.
You're, you're still on?
Still on, Ms. Salvador, sorry. That was a side chat, I apologize.
Oh, okay, um, what, what was the lady's name, Anita?
Tracy?
The one, the one who's representing the goners?
Um, this, this Tracy, Tracy Rivera, Rivera, sorry, thank you. But she is indisposed, Mr. DeVito's just on here on behalf of Ms. Rivera. But she'll get, she'll, she will happy to communicate these things to Ms. Rivera as well.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
In terms of the code, if any questions about the code, about this issue, you can call me tomorrow and we can look into it, just to make sure. Just give you clarity on it. Again, the building department is going to inspect the property before they issue a CO, there is a grant. And if there's any violation to the code to the fence or otherwise, they'd flag it and hold it for the CO to be issued. So, there will be a documentation, make sure that the property is in full compliance with the code, both in relation to this application and otherwise.
Okay, and the goners will hear that we did not dispute it? Will they hear what I said?
I will make sure that Tracy Rivera communicates to the goners that you did not dispute the placement of the shed.
Okay, in my verbiage, please.
Yes.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Okay, board, in the, we're going back to 29, in the issue of the shed, can we get a motion for the shed?
Anthony, I move to grant the application as presented.
Check.
I have a motion by Rick Cunha to grant the application as presented, seconded by Jim Razzarella, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's granted. Thank you. Good night.
Good night. That was one law.
Okay, getting back to the holdovers, case number 25 of December 9th, 2020. Anthony Frick, 4 Biltmore Drive Shoreham. Property is located on the south side of Biltmore Drive, 146 feet east of Ridge Road, Ridge. Applicant requests minimum and total side yard variances for proposed attached garage addition.
Mr. Lindsay?
Yes.
I have Anthony Frick and a Chris Alvino for the applicant. And the applicant.
Okay.
We have, right now.
We have a print, we have a print.
Hello?
Is this Chris Alvino or Anthony Frick?
This is Chris Alvino, and right next to me here is Anthony Frick.
Okay, can I just have both of your attentions, give it to the board's attorney, so that way he can swear you in?
I'm gonna swear to the truth, the whole truth about the truth.
Yes, we do. I do.
I do. Are, did both of you swear or is it only one of you?
We both swear.
Okay, thank you.
And can I get both your names and addresses for the appearance?
Anthony Frick, 4 Biltmore Drive Shoreham, New York.
My name is Chris Alvino. I work for Harold Hutt, Architect 363 North Wellwood Avenue, Lindenhurst.
And how would you like to explain that?
Well, we're here for a variance on a garage addition to the house. It's attached. We're here for a side yard variance, and we're here for an aggregate side yard variance. It's a, we put an addition on the house. It's a well-kept property. We have a nice addition going on there. Yeah, I think this plans that you have, to show you what it looks like, but it's, it's within the, the design of the, of the house. Works well with the design of the house.
Anthony, is there pictures of this?
Ms. Riccardi's checking right now. I do not have.
I don't have any floor plans, and the only photograph in the file is this one right here. I don't.
Well, that's, that's a neighbor. That's number two, right next door. They have an addition, just like, basically similar to ours, except we have a little doghouse dormer over the door.
I only have a, other photograph is the one of the posters you put in front of the house.
Correct, but I did, I did hand in, I did hand in plans for this.
Not to the Board of Appeals, to the building department. You would have, we wouldn't have asked for plans for this.
Okay, so you can email the plans over to us right now and I can put them up on the screen.
I can, I can hold it up if you'd like.
You can do that as well.
Show you what it looks like.
Oh, my God.
Good luck, Mr. Lindsay.
Okay, that's, that's what you added on to the house?
That's what we're adding on, the garage addition, just like that.
Okay, what, what is upstairs? Is that a fake doghouse?
Yes.
Yeah, it's just a storage.
All right, just fake. So what do you have going up into the garage? You have a plan, a floor plan for that?
Yes, we do have a floor plan. That is right here. Here's the floor plan of the garage.
Okay, so how, how do you propose stairs? I can't, that's really not doing me much good, I can't.
It's, there is no stairs.
See, I can't see and, I can't really.
It's, it's an open space.
So it's open, there's no upstairs?
There's no upstairs.
Okay, so you just have the roof in the car? Together?
It's just bringing clear story light into the garage.
Clear story light to the garage, okay. And how? Is that matching the ridge line on the house, that garage?
Yes, yep.
That is matching the ridge line on the garage?
It's lower, it's lower than the ridge line of the house. It's quite a bit lower.
Okay, first it was the ridge line, now it's, how, how much lower is it? Do you have a side view of that?
Like maybe, like maybe six feet lower?
You have a side view of that?
Yes. There's the, there's the side views.
Okay, I'm picking that up now.
There's the rear view and the side view, right there.
Okay, so that's the back end. You got a dormer coming off the back that's already there, I assume?
That, that's correct.
That's correct. All right, and that matches, okay, and that matches the ridge, it looks like at that point right there, correct?
Yes, the, the little doghouse in the front matches the, the ridge of the garage addition, correct.
Okay, you have heating and plumbing in that garage?
No.
No. Okay, you have intent to put a heating and plumbing in that?
No.
Is there other garages in the neighborhood that match up to that garage? Is that the picture you showed us of the other house?
Yes, the difference being there's no doghouse dormer over. There's no little clear story light. We've, we've made it a little fancier.
Okay.
Okay, okay, nah. I guess that's about all I have, have that. How big is that garage? How big is it?
The garage is I have it here, one second. It's twenty-one by twenty, which makes it four hundred and twenty-nine point six square feet.
Okay, that's just enough, then, correct?
I'm sorry?
Just enough for two cars, or?
Just enough for two cars.
Um. And I guess there's an entrance going from the garage into the house, correct?
There is, there is an entrance of the garage going into the house, there is.
Okay. All right, I, I really have no further questions.
Anthony, I have a question. Maybe I missed it. I I don't think I missed it, but the uh, this is adding on to the side of the house. How, how much of, I can't really see from the survey on the screen. How much of a side yard have you left?
Fourteen point seven feet.
How much?
Fourteen point seven.
Is that consistent with other structures in the neighborhood?
Definitely, it's a very big side yard. You could drive through there. It's big enough for, it's, it's fine.
That's not what I asked you. I asked you whether or not that's a fourteen-foot side yard is consistent with other houses in the area.
Definitely.
And you've seen that yourself?
Yes, I have.
Okay, thank you for the answer, then.
Thank you.
Okay, nothing further.
Mr. Lindsay, I do not have any speakers on this.
I don't have correspondence either.
Okay, I'd like to, uh, then I would like to uh grant the application type two, because good luck, gentlemen, with the garage.
Mr. Lindsay, um, we have a standard covenant languages for all garage.
Um, well, this is a task garage, so we're not gonna, it wouldn't apply.
It doesn't, out of that.
So we have a motion by Mr. Lindsay to grant the application as presented, seconded by Mr. Cunha. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion's granted.
Thank you, thank you very much. I appreciate everything.
Thank you, gentlemen, and ladies, sorry.
Yes, thank you, Lord. Thank you for. Thank you, Phil.
We have a mo, have a motion for brief recess.
Are we going into executive session, or just a recess?
Motion for brief recess to our executive session.
Okay, we're gonna have a few minutes before I'll be in there, but yes, I'll make that motion.
Make the motion.
And I'll second it. What time do you want to get into session?
Motion. Motion is.
Sure, you can go now, I'm not going.
Motion for a brief, motion for a recess into executive session, seconded by
Me.
Mr. Cunha, all in favor?
Aye.
When are we going into executive?
Can everybody hear me?
I can hear you.
Good.
Who, who the hell wants to hear?
And uh, Anthony, you have to start my video.
Let's see John Doyle's diploma.
Everybody back? We get a motion to resume the hearing?
Don't move.
Second.
Okay, all right, board.
Board members turning to page sixteen uh under grant extension. Case number thirty-two of October third, two thousand eighteen, Jason M. Smith.
Yes, uh, the decision is prior grant of ten-three, two thousand eighteen is extended for a period of six months to expire for three, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
On the same page, uh, for extension of time to file the covenants, case number eighteen of June seventeen, two thousand twenty, under the name of John Scutari, Jr.
Yes, the decision is the time to file the covenant is extended for three months from the date of the letter.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, turning to page seventeen. Modification of motion, case numbers twelve through fifteen of March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty, under the name of Osprey Homes LLC.
I move to that the prior grant of three twenty-five twenty is modified to delete mitigation measures number six and number nine of the BZI planners' recommendations, remaining conditions as originally approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and turning to page eighteen for board to adopt findings of fact and conclusions for case numbers one and two of October twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, under the name of Ann Montanez.
I move that the findings of facts and conclusions adopted by the board.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and that would conclude.
I'll conclude the January thirteenth, twenty twenty-one hearing. Time is seven fifty-one. Can I have a motion to resume to? Motion by Rick Cunha to adjourn, seconded by Lindsay, all in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Everybody be safe now.